Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council back to order.
This part. On the side there. That light on? There you go.
Technical difficulties already. Now we got it all. I'm gonna try it the third time. I would like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council back to order and let the record reflect that we had a study session and no action was taken. I would like to ask you all to rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Trimbley, would you lead us, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please put your hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That sounded wonderful with all of you in the room. The next item on our agenda is the time we have presentations, and we have two this evening. First, we have an individual, and this is Lauren Amaro, who is representing Domestic Violence Month, I believe it is. So if, oh, there she is. If you'll state your name for the record, and I know you have a short presentation for us, and you do need to know that we, in some shape or form or another, have purple on for you tonight. So we got the memo.
Thank you, council members. My name is Dr. Lauren Amaro. I'm a professor of Health and Family Communication at Pepperdine University. I'm here representing the Advisory Council of Interface Children and Family Services. I'm also here as a domestic violence survivor, now a wife and mom of a healthy family and a happy family. I stood before you less than one year ago in response to the deaths of Janet Huntington and Stacey Guzman at the hands of their husbands. And you offered this proclamation very generously. We held a town hall last November to address domestic violence in our community, and we're still working. Ventura County has the highest rate of domestic violence in a county its size in California. October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month. Nationally, 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men will experience domestic violence, physical, psychological, emotional, spiritual, or economic abuse in their lifetime. We can lower those numbers by becoming an educated community of healthy families and helpful bystanders. Paint It Purple, as you see on the slide, is Interface's campaign to educate to prevent. We are looking for volunteers to paint one nail purple, or to wear purple, thank you, and to take a pledge to increase awareness of domestic violence prevention. This is not an Interface problem. It's not a Coalition for Family Harmony problem. It's not a law enforcement problem. It's our problem. It's for our families to respond to. So I'm asking the council, and I'm asking the community members present today, to please consider participating in the Paint It Purple campaign by painting a fingernail, wearing purple, or attending one of the many events throughout the county, and to take a pledge to become a champion for change in our community. Interface will have Paint It Purple tables at the Oxnard Multicultural Festival and Ventura Art Walk on October 7th and 8th, at the Ventura County Board of Supervisors on October 17th, and multiple events at Pepperdine throughout October alongside many other events throughout the community in Camrio. But we need more presence here in Camrio. If you're willing to partner with us, as the council has, by wearing purple tonight and by providing materials at City Hall for the month, please let me know. If you can't give your time, community members, a $20 donation educates 2 children about how to recognize the warning signs of abuse and to say, "My body belongs to me," for the rest of their lives. $500 gets us in front of a class of high school students, and our goal is to see every high school student every year for all 4 years of their education. We want no more silence, no more shame, no more stigma. I'm placing business cards and materials in the back of the hall, and I would ask that anybody who's interested, please go to the Interface website or contact me personally for a way to help and participate. Thank you so much.
Before you go away, can you give the website and the phone numbers so the people at home can contact you?
Absolutely. The website is, I believe, icfs.org. I have my materials in the back, not up front here. And it certainly can be found in a Google search for Interface Children and Family Services. And their website and hotlines are both available on the website, yes, on the website as well. I don't have the number off the top of my head, unfortunately. Thank you very much, though.
But thank you for coming, and thank you for all you do. So we really true appreciate, and the community does as well. So October is a month that we can remember and celebrate it as that acknowledgement, but it's something that really should happen all year long. So it's important that we do indeed. Thank you.
There is nail polish in the back? If anybody wants to do that tonight. Gentlemen, you are especially effective at this campaign.
Volunteer.
There's a lot of people in the audience, so that's a lot of fingernails, so thank you so much. We also have one more presentation this evening, and one more special presentation. We are honored to have Dr. Beck of California State University Channel Islands here to give us an update. And we have our dolphin.
Oh, thank you for that. Well, good evening, Mayor McDonald, council member, staff. It's such a pleasure to have the opportunity to come back and tell you a little bit about what's going on at Cal State Channel Islands, my favorite topic of conversation. To say that it's an exciting time at the university would be a significant understatement. We are growing like gangbusters and entering into a very exciting new phase of the university. Last year, at commencement in May, we graduated our largest graduating class in our history. 2,261 students walked across that stage to receive their baccalaureate or master's degrees. And this fall, we welcomed our largest entering class, and for the first time, we have broken 7,000 students on campus, which is quite remarkable in a short period of time. We are the fastest-growing California State University campus of the 23 campuses and one of the fastest public master's granting universities in the country, actually. Our master plan calls at full build-out for us to be at 15,000 students. It is unclear how long it will take us to go from 7,000 students to 15,000 students because, of course, that involves the legislature, the governor's office, and chancellor's office. We're really pleased that this past year, we did receive funding to accommodate more students and to grow, but really, our ability to provide greater access to students depends upon our ability to support them once they get to campus. I don't know if you're all aware, but there's a recent study from the Public Policy Institute of California that indicates that if all of the universities and colleges in the state of California continue to graduate students at the same rate we do now with bachelor's degrees, we will be more than a million bachelor's degrees short of what California's economy requires in order to thrive by 2025. So we are placing particular emphasis on our campus on graduation rates, on increasing the rate at which our students graduate, and overall educational attainment is a top priority for us. We have 3 student housing villages on campus. They are not the dorm room that I had when I was in college. I think mine looked a little bit more like a 7-Eleven basement. These look a little bit more like a Four Seasons guest suite. The most recent of our housing villages, we just opened just this time, last year, Santa Rosa Village. We have increased our capacity on campus for on-campus living by 600 students. Very excited about that. And sort of returning to the idea of helping our students to increase their educational attainment and the rates at which they graduate, the literature is very clear, and our own data is very clear, that students who live on campus are actually much more likely to succeed and to persist to graduation and to do so in a timely manner. So we actually have a lot of programming around our residential experiences, integrating curricular and co-curricular experiences, but really teaching our students solid habits and academic habits from day 1. I just wanted to give you updates on a couple of our new academic programs. So one of our new programs, Clinical Lab Sciences, really exciting. This arose, as all of our degree programs do, from a demand, from the community and employment demand. This is a post-baccalaureate degree program, so students who have obtained a bachelor's degree in either chemistry or in biology are then able to enroll in post-baccalaureate coursework in things like immunology, microbiology, clinical chemistry. And it's a really intensive program. They then also have clinical rotations 4 days a week. The point at which they complete that program, they are eligible to sit the test to become a licensed clinical lab scientist. We are also, as you may have heard, launching mechatronics engineering in fall, so fall of '18, and it's a very timely degree program. The science of intelligent machines is essentially, it's a very interesting combination of chemical and electrical, chemical, mechanical and electrical engineering, but a lot of it revolves around robotics and other really timely topics. Huge demand in this region, almost 300 engineering positions floated every year in our region. So we're very excited about that. Our nursing program is not new, but it's kind of awesome. We actually were just ranked #11 out of 127 nursing programs in the state of California. So we will take a moment to say nursing's doing well. So a very significant point of pride for us and obviously of significant need. We just hired, just this past July, a new chief academic officer. You may know, our former chief academic officer, Provost, left us to become the president of Chico State. I don't know what she was thinking. And so we just hired a new provost, Jeff Chase. Very excited about him, and he will be engaging in broad-based academic planning on campus. And you will hear more about where we are going in the future, but that's sort of a snapshot in a nutshell of where we're at. Happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Gildon.
Yes, maybe you can enlighten me a little bit. I've read some articles that males aren't going to college in the numbers that they used to. Is there any new information that you can shed on that?
Well, no, actually, not in our region. So in our region, that we have actually done, something we can be very proud of, is that our students in this region, in the state of California, overall, are completing their A through G requirements and actually significant interest in attending colleges and universities. The issue for us, it's a different issue in the state of California than relative to the East Coast where there are significant demographic issues, smaller proportion of young students who would be eligible to go to college because of population decline. That is not the issue here. For us, the issue is having capacity, particularly in the Cal State system. So we have far more demand than we do capacity.
Very good. Anything else? Mr. Trimbley.
Hi, Dr. Beck, thanks. What I want to ask you is, what percentage of, there was a slide on the incoming undergraduates, what percentage of those incoming undergraduates, roughly speaking, are from Ventura County?
Well, combination between Ventura County, LA County, and Santa Barbara County, 75% to 80%, give or take. We are, so we are a regional comprehensive university, and that is by design. We are very serious about serving our region. We have almost no out-of-state students, again, by design. Our mission really is to serve our local region. We do serve students from the rest of the state of California, but overwhelmingly from our region.
And there's a marked difference between California State University and University of California in that respect, right?
Sure, yeah. So, I mean, I think it depends on the campus and depends on the mission of the campus, but our mission is teacher-scholar mission and sort of applied research and very specific to our local community. And we do a great deal of community-based learning, community outreach, that sort of thing, yeah.
And one last question, Madam Mayor. Relative to the 75% to 80%, would you describe that as being a relatively typical percentage for a CSU or is CSUCI a little higher than others across, if you had to guess?
Such a great question. I don't know the answer, but if I had to guess, I might guess we're on the high side but close. So I think, oftentimes, it's a place-bound question, so how many of the students are place-bound relative to income, relative to family ties, and that sort of thing. Some of the larger universities have more interest in out-of-state students, international students, those sorts of things. We're relatively small, but I would say most Cal States are pretty regionally identified.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
While the school's been growing, we've been watching you all these years, how are your athletic programs for the future coming? I know you have that big field out there as you go into the new entrance into the Cal State, but where are you headed in that direction? Because there's a lot of people that might want to come work with you on doing things out there.
Yeah.
I'm hearing about it, that's why I'm waiting to see.
Yeah, so am I. So it's actually really interesting. Our athletic programs, we do have athletic programs on campus. They are not NCAA. They are mural sports programs. And I'm actually really proud of our students. I just met with them earlier today, actually. They run these programs, essentially. We provide support for them, but they are, you know, we have men's and women's soccer and sailing. Our surfing team does really well. And so the students really have built this on their own. It's always a resource question, so the question is whether or not resources would provide for an expansion of that or not. Athletics are expensive. So for now, this is working pretty well for us. We have a couple of fields, actually, we have 2 fields, and the students are, I mean, it's incredibly economical, the way that we run it now.
Anything else? Well, thank you so much for coming. We always enjoy hearing about the good things that are going on out there and watching you grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one more short, we'll call it a community announcement, from Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have 2 community meetings coming up in October. One is having to do with our kickoff of our Economic Development Strategic Plan, and to help kick that off, we want to obtain public input at a community meeting that will be October 10th from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the library community meeting room. The strategic plan is really intended to be our roadmap to help our current business community with business retention and expansion, but also attract new business and create jobs. And obviously, that's a very important topic for our community, and we hope to see people come out and help us kick that off. The Nadal Sundell Group is a consultant that provides economic development analysis and have done so nationwide, and we're very fortunate to have them help us with this plan, and they'll be leading the meeting. News releases and ads will be going out this weekend to provide more detail about the meeting. Also, already available on our website, if people go to the city's homepage, there'll be a section called "City News," and the first item will be a link to more information about this plan and the meeting, as well as also linking them to an online survey. So if anybody can't make the meeting, but they'd still like to participate, we'll have an online survey that they can participate in as well. So just wanted to announce that, and again, the date is October 10th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the library for Economic Development Strategic Plan. Another meeting, which will be a week later, October 17th, also 7:00 to 8:30 at the library, will have to do with a very important project for the city and the community, and that is our groundwater desalter. That's to ensure that we have a reliable water source for the future, as well as preserve the very delicate water quality in our aquifer. And that's a project that's been going on for a while. It's moved locations. We're kind of down to one of our last sites to consider, and so the community meeting will be to explain the project for those who have questions, and also explain the benefits of the latest site that we've identified. Again, that meeting is October 17th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Also, if people are interested in learning more about that project, they can go to the city's website, and there'll be a link as well to more information on that project. As a side note, there's an update in the environmental document we call a Supplemental EIR that is going to hit, become public and hit the streets this coming week, and will be available for the next 45 days. And then we will ultimately have a public hearing on December 13th to review that. So there's really 2 meetings, the community meeting on October 17th, and then the public hearing on December 13th, both related to that project.
Thank you very much. These are 2 opportunities to engage the community and for the community to get involved. So we hope that you do participate. Any questions, they can call City Hall, and we'll be sure to get them that answer, or again, go to the website. The next item on the agenda is public comments, and I do not have any speaker sheets, except I understand that in the audience, we have members of the Kiwanis Club for our annual Peanut Day, right? I think we all have our dollar. We're ready. And you've got quite an audience tonight. We'll see if you can sell some peanuts, or give peanuts away. You always have them given away. Give them away. So you want to come on up to the podium there and explain to everyone exactly what this is and what you use the money for?
Hi. This is the 25th Annual Peanut Day. October 7th is the day that you'll probably see some of our Kiwanis, along with youth group members from the high schools, around at the markets, passing out peanuts and collecting any donations that you might like to give us. What do we use the money for? Well, last year, we were able to finally get started in building a special needs playground at the community center. We got the first couple of pieces of equipment put in, and we're hoping to expand that program because it seems to be catching on with the kids. And a lot of these children who are in wheelchairs and parents who are disabled can't really go to playgrounds with their kids if they don't have access to the equipment. This year, we decided that we were going to take on a new project. We had spoken to Casa Pacifica, and they said that they have a need for some help with youngsters who leave their facility when they're 18 or so, and they're on their own. Once they leave, they have absolutely nothing except what they have on their back. And we decided, well, maybe we can help them out by providing them with some luggage, backpacks, hygienic supplies, and so we've started to do that. So this is a little taste of what we do, and we certainly like to be involved as much as we can. So on October 7th, if you see us, we're out there around the markets, passing out peanuts and taking any loose change or any cash that you might have. We appreciate all the help that we've gotten from the city council, and thank you very much for all of your help.
And Joe, I should have asked you to give your name for the record, and then what position are you, do you hold at the moment? Are you just the peanut guy?
I'm just the Peanut Day Chairman.
The peanut guy. Well, thank you so much for all the good work you do.
Thank you.
All of you probably didn't know, you're going to get snacks tonight. Thank you all, and thank you for coming. So remember, everyone, look for the, out with their box of peanuts and support the Kiwanis Club and the good work they do. I have one cleanup item I need to do before we move on to our agenda this evening. We do have, we did have a special city council meeting open, having to do with one of our closed-session items, and again, no action was taken in that meeting, but I do need to close that special meeting. So I'm not closing the meeting, you don't have to leave. This is the special meeting, so that will now be adjourned. So now, we have one agenda item left tonight, and I know that's what you're all here for, and that is a general plan amendment, GPA referral request, Camrio Springs Golf Course. And before we start it, I want to give a little bit of the ground rules we have here in the council chambers, and when we have, especially when we have a lot of people in the audience, and we have a topic that, with any topic, there's always those who are for it, and there's always those that are against it. So we set some rules down so that everyone feels comfortable coming up, talking to us, giving their opinion. So some of those rules are, we ask that no one laughs and boos or heckles. We ask that no one applauds, gives them a round of applause, because that way, again, it intimidates people who might not agree with them. So while you, some councils, I think sometime we had, they were waving, but no clapping, no loud noises, so that keeps people from feeling intimidated. So we want everyone to come up, be able to give their opinion, for or against, without feeling embarrassed or intimidated or otherwise. So we'll hear from everyone, we all get the opportunity. We do have a 3-minute timeframe when we get to public comments on this item. There's a clock. You can see it, we can see it. It counts down. When it gets to a minute, it turns yellow, and that lets you know that it's time to wind down your comments. And we really, tonight, with all of you in the room, was, I assume a lot of you want to talk, we got to make sure we stick to that 3 minutes. The other thing we might suggest, if you all, if you follow someone and you basically want to say the same thing, there's nothing wrong with getting up and saying, "I agree with whoever," or "I agree on these points," and not having to, you know, to go through it all again. So we're here to listen, as you'll see, we listen very intently to everyone who comes before us. So I think that there's also, are there some nonverbal cards still left in the back? So there are yellow cards that you can fill out that are written comments, if you don't want to get up and talk, and then there are the speaker sheets, and there's a box right by the podium, if you'll put those in there. Our city clerk will get them in order, and then we will call everyone forward when we get to the public comment portion. So we will begin with our staff report, then we'll hear from the applicant, then we will open for public comments, then we'll go back in reverse order, hear from the applicant again if there's anything they want to add, and then go back to staff, and then to council comments and deliberation. Don't know how long will take tonight, but if by chance we get to about an hour and a half from now, 9:30, we'll take a break, and then we'll come back in 10 minutes or so, and keep going. So did I miss anything? Got all the rules down? Okay, with that, then I will turn it over to Mr. Vaca, I assume.
Yes, thank you, Mayor McDonald, and members of the city council. So we have a general plan amendment referral request from New Urban West Incorporated, Camrio LLC, represented by Jason Hawn, and supported by the ownership, Mr. Ronald Richards with Chameleon Springs LLC. And it is at the site of the existing Camrio Springs Golf Course. And the request is for an amendment to our general plan land use element designation of the site from quasi-public to low-medium density residential for 30 acres of the overall 182-acre Camrio Springs Golf Course. So for that 30-acre portion at medium density would be a maximum of 10 dwelling units per acre. A brief overview on our city's general plan, it's a document that's required by state law, and our city's general plan consists of 9 elements, and our land use element is one of the primary elements among them. It's a long-range comprehensive policy document that's periodically updated and revised as needed, and amendments are typically considered each year in accordance with the city council policy. It's important to note for the audience and for the council as a reminder, that a general plan amendment referral is only a request to allow additional study and analysis. It's not an approval tonight, and it's not necessarily a denial tonight of an actual general plan amendment. It's only to, if allowed to proceed, allow additional study and analysis, and it's important to point out for the audience that future public hearings before both the planning commission and the city council are required before any approval of a land use amendment were to occur. So if there is a movement for the applicant to proceed with the referral, again, there still will be significant additional analysis and study. So the aerial photograph here on the slide depicts the existing golf course property in yellow hatching. You can see it's bound here. The existing land uses that surround the golf course include the Camrio Springs Mobile Home Park. We also have Camrio Springs single-family detached and townhomes, and we have Ridgeview Street along the northern border of the golf course. And to the southwest and backside of the existing golf course is Conejo Creek over here, and the Camrio Sanitary District, which is kind of off the exhibit, and then we have hillsides that surround the remainder of the development. The existing site is an 18-hole golf course with the driving range and a clubhouse. The existing site is an 18-hole golf course with the driving range and a clubhouse. So the proposed project as presented tonight for consideration for the referral is to designate 30 acres of the existing quasi-public land use designation to low medium density residential, again, to allow up to 10 dwelling units per acre maximum, which would achieve up to 300 units. All new housing units are to be age restricted to persons aged 55 and above. And the project description as presented would preserve the remaining 152 acres of the golf course property as quasi-public for golf course and ancillary open space uses. That would mean that approximately 84% of the property would be maintained as golf course, open space, a clubhouse and other open space amenities. And 16% of the overall acreage would be developed for residential uses. The request includes the anticipated study of the long-term feasibility of both an 18-hole golf course and other golf course formats, such as a nine-hole or 12-hole course. The proposal includes the provision of a new clubhouse with restaurant facilities, including outdoor dining and event space for banquets and possible nonprofit events. The proposed project also includes eight and a half acres of neighborhood parks, a dog park and new walking trails. If this general plan amendment is referred for further study, this application would also necessitate a zone change, a residential plan development permit, a tract map, an environmental analysis and compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act requirements. Again, all of these applications would be reviewed at future public meetings if the referral proceeds. This exhibit was provided by the applicant and we overlaid some notes just to highlight what I just outlined on the prior slide. So this tan area is the area proposed for the low medium density residential development. It consists of 30 acres overall and would accommodate up to 300 units. It's located along Ridgeview Drive and it preserves some open space to act as a buffer and drainage and golf course between the proposed development area and the existing neighborhoods within the Camrio Springs community. As you can see, it has a minimum of a 250-foot, up to 265-foot open space buffer between the development area and adjacent development. It preserves the existing driving range and it proposes an additional dog park amenity just to the north of the existing pond facility that's out there today. It proposes an updated circulation network to get into the golf course parking lot and gated access into the residential community that's proposed. And it also includes a provision, as I indicated, for an updated clubhouse with some outdoor dining and event amenity space. And then it preserves the remainder 152 acres for golf course and open space. And so the balance of the existing golf course is intended to be preserved and/or reworked depending on what the analysis for the preservation of golf were to determine through the review The applicant has gone through extensive outreach with the community since January of this year. An advisory committee was formed that consists of members of all six homeowners associations throughout the Camrio Springs area and it had also included membership from the senior men's and women's golf clubs. There were 11 workshops that were held and the intent was to create a broad framework for potential redevelopment of a portion of the Camrio Springs Golf Course and also to preserve significant open space and golf as part of any development. The proposed conceptual plan, we're told, is the result of feedback from a series of 20 open house meetings that included over 400 neighborhood residents in participation. We've also been advised that the advisory committee created a newsletter and a website that they utilize to provide opportunities for the community to visualize the conceptual plans and provide comments on those plans. And they also walked the local neighborhoods to distribute conceptual plans and answer questions and they've indicated that they knocked on 492 doors. The property, as you see here in the yellow hash, is currently designated as quasi-public with the existing general plan land use designation. And the existing zoning is rural exclusive. So tonight, first you're to consider the referral request and accept public testimony. And you have the option to approve the referral, to allow the applicant to move forward, to work on additional analysis and present additional studies at future meetings. You do have the option to deny the referral this evening. If the council chooses to refer this general plan amendment for further study, the council can also provide pointed direction if they feel that's necessary or warranted. If the request is referred and there are specific issues or an issue that the council feels it's important to have studied in order to make future decisions about the change, it's appropriate to present that to the applicant and staff tonight so we can anticipate focusing on those areas of interest to the council. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff at this point? Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, Joe, and maybe this is not the correct time to ask this question, but I will because they opened up questions. The, and you can answer it later on if it's more admissible to do this, but the 30 potential, the 30 acres that we're talking about, does any of those acres in a flood plain? And if so, how would that be addressed?
So, Public Works can weigh in on this, but generally speaking, the existing golf course is in a floodway and that is an area where the applicant and the city understands is an area for potential further study for sure, to look at the hydrology and how the proposed development would be safe and would also preserve that floodway and ensure that the channel doesn't back up. So that's an area where we anticipate significant amount of study and the applicants aware that also.
I'm taking it. Anyone else at this point in time? I have a question. And again, I'm not sure when the right time is, but I'm going to ask it now as well. If, if this were to go through and, and we granted the change and the building were to go through, what guarantee is or how would we be guaranteed that all these other things would happen? That they would maintain the golf course, rebuild it? So what mechanism is there to?
We could, you could direct the applicant to work with staff on the preparation of a specific plan, that these were all elements that would be required as part of the overall master plan development of the golf course. The applicant has also indicated they're interested in working with staff if this proceeds on land use covenants. So that's something that we would definitely explore to preserve open space and to the extent feasible, preserve golf course functions.
And you feel that's the, is that last avenue, the best avenue for ensuring that this all indeed does occur and?
I think it's a very strong tool to preserve open space for sure. I think the golf course is something that they want to analyze and proceed with, but we'd have to look at the feasibility for those studies.
But there is a mechanism that the city, whatever it might be, can put in place if we do all this, to ensure all this happens, that they don't just get the zoning change and then walk away.
Yes, and that's something that would be analyzed if this is referred for study, yes.
Madam Mayor, just as a matter of practice, when there are developer requirements for community amenities, for example, we typically phase the development and allow certain, only a few tracks to be developed and then time those with the installation of community amenities to make sure those amenities are built at the same time the housing is being built.
Well, I understand that, but here you're talking about maintaining a golf course in the long-term future, not just building a road or putting in a, you know, something like that. So it really is a long-term, some mechanism to ensure that it happens and that it is maintained. Okay. Anything else at this point in time? Okay, I don't have speaker sheets, but I'm going to ask that the applicant, who's ever representing the applicant, comes up and Jason's back. And before you start, last time you were here, we asked that you go and talk and it sounds to me like you have gone and talked. So thank you so much for reaching out to the community and, and doing, doing exactly that.
We have, Madam Mayor. And, and thank you again. Thank you to the mayor, to city council and to staff. My name is Jason Hahn with New Urban West. And we are actually, we're very pleased and grateful for the privilege of having closely collaborated with the community over the course of past eight months. I'd like to introduce Mr. Ron Kester of the Camrio Springs Golf Course Redevelopment Advisory Committee for presentation.
Great, thank you. And we know Ron well as, very well as, as well? If you could state your name for the record though as well.
Thank you, I'm Ron Kester. I live at 6329 Katana, so I'm a resident of Camrio Springs. And Mayor McDonald, council members, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity of coming back. We think we have something that's special and something that the community supports and something will enhance not only Camrio Springs, but enhance Camrio as a, as a community. Kind of interesting, when you were talking to Jason, you said, you know, you advised him to go back and we heard that loud and clear as a community. The problem that we had is that New Urban West did not have a contract anymore. Okay? So what we did as a community and what, and the reason I wanted to talk to you is to talk to you about the process that we went through and that this, you see up here, it says a community plan for Camrio Springs. This is truly what the community has put together as this is what we think is best for our community. And New Urban West, through an iterative process of review and revision and review and revision, has responded to that. And what we've come up with is a true collaborative effort. After the last meeting, we all went away thinking, what's the next step? So we formed an advisory committee. We were not elected, we have no authority. We just put together a group of concerned people and we said, what can we do to move this forward? Because very honestly, we were afraid that the golf course was going to close down, was going to go away and we wanted to do everything possible to prohibit that. So we wanted, the original committee that we had back in November had about 20 people to it, but we really represented about two or three of the homeowners' associations of concern. We stepped back and said, let's put together an advisory and communications committee and make it representative, two representatives from each of the homeowners' associations and stakeholders. So there's six homeowners' associations, the senior men's golf club and the women's golf club. We solicited and recruited two members from each of those organizations and said, let's, as our goal, make sure, you know, let me put it here. Well, that didn't work.
Uh-uh.
As our, our goal, let's make sure that we put out correct information and then we give adequate feedback. And so we looked, as we said, the advisory committee is made up of the men's club, women's club, all six HOAs, and input from over 900 neighborhood residents. One of the thing, in Joe's slide, we talked about the 20 and a little later we'll talk about, we actually had over 25 open houses that were attended by over 900 residents of the community. And these were, were iterative. So we got a lot of input, a lot of feedback and what you're about, going to see in what Joe presented, is what the community was really looking at. One of the requirements, we wanted to protect our property values and quality of life. Okay? We wanted to permanently preserve golf at Camrio Springs. We thought that was important. And as you said, Mayor, permanently preserve it. Okay? One of the people we talked to said they were afraid they were going to try to take two bites out of the apple. You know, let, let's develop and then let's come back and then five years later, let's take another bite out of the apple and develop that. So one of, one of our concerns was, we can't let that happen. We have to do something to avoid that. We wanted to ensure resident feedback was a centerpiece of any design effort, facilitate timely and accurate communications between Camrio Springs, the city of Camrio and New Urban West. And we want to thank the city for working with us primarily in understanding the process. That we, we wanted to make sure we understood and conveyed to the community exactly what a GPA referral was, you know, as, as Joe pointed out. To provide opportunities for each and every resident to express their opinion and input on the concept plan. We had a lot of pro, we had con, we had differences of opinions, but over the series of all of those open houses, we came to what we think is, is a concept supported by the majority of the community. We, we can never have 100%, we, we understand that. We wanted to create a diverse group with representatives of all stakeholders. The main goal was to prevent loss of property value, visual blight and fencing associated with the potential closure of the golf course. You know, we wanted to preserve Camrio Springs. Our goals and objectives, and a lot of this will go through because it's already been presented, is to protect enhanced property values for all of us, permanently preserve the golf course and set it up for long-term financial success. We called it a revitalization effort. The reason being is, right now, the Camrio Springs Golf Course, as much as we love it, is in a decaying state. It, it really is. Somebody jokingly said that the only thing holding up the clubhouse and restaurant are the termites, so please don't kill the termites.
Probably true.
But we, we wanted to revitalize it, make it something that the community is proud of and that Camrio, Camrio's proud of, the golfers. We wanted to minimize impact to our neighbors. Nobody wants somebody to plop a bunch of houses right in the middle of them. But we wanted to limit the development to a small portion of the property, now it's 16%. Locating any new housing furthest away from existing residents. Ensure compatibility with the existing neighborhood by providing senior-only housing. And what that also did is it minimizes traffic, minimizes congestion, minimizes noise. And maintain the active senior lifestyle. Now, not all of Camrio Springs is senior, we, we recognize that. But almost all of Camrio Springs is adult. And so that, that's the lifestyle and the tone of the community is, is senior and adult, lots of walking, lots of open spaces, you know, that community flair. Providing new community open space, trails and parks and permanent, again, permanently preserving golf on the property. You may notice that, you're going to see that, that phrase multiple times. That, that was the number one list when we said, what is it that the community wants? The community wanted to permanently preserve golf. And address critical issues surrounding flooding, drainage, traffic and, and the viability of golf. You know, we know that, that that's a flood plain and it's also a drain from Conejo Mountain. And we know that there are issues associated with that. But by approving the GPA referral, we can now go study those issues and come up with mitigation plans. And in the plan, you're, you're to see where the lakes are along the side, we've made those open space areas so that will, will help mitigate that and then we can improve on that. On the drainage, you know, we, we have flood coming one way, drain coming the other way. Okay? So there's going to have to be work, work to do that. Traffic, there's always traffic issues particularly on Ridgeview Road exit. We want to look, look at that, look at the viability of golf. It's not, do we do golf? It's what kind of golf do we do? And so we're, have a team of professional designers and management that we'll talk about a little later, that's going to do a detailed subjective analysis, objective analysis, excuse me, objective analysis on what golf fits their best from a footprint point of view and a marketability and sustainability point of view. And there are options. 18-hole is, is obviously what we would like to see, but nine-hole and 12-hole are also, also options and we won't know which is best until we complete that analysis. We did do an extensive community reach process. We held over 28 community meetings since January with over 900 Camrio Springs residents attending it. And feedback was incorporated into every iteration of the concept plan and we'll talk about that in a minute. These meetings included meetings in May, June, August, September. The initial 11 workshops over three days was really, what is it that the community wants? What are your concerns? What are your goals? What can we do? And then additional open houses that as we refine the concept, coming back and saying, what does this look like? Is this something you want? And then refining it even further. In addition to the community meetings, because there's some people that can't attend, we sent out three newsletter updates to the entire community. We established an informational website for them to go to. We solicited feedback email and we collected, collected over 300 signed support cards that will enter into the, enter into the record. And we can give you a full, full list of, of all of that. But what our primary goal was, is to make sure that every resident had the opportunity to be heard. Now, admittedly, not everyone had that opportunity. And the reason being is, we found out that some of our emails were not getting to some of the residents purely because of they didn't have email or some HOAs were not passing it on as much. So we did a mass mailing to every, every resident, just resident, and in it, we said, go to this website, it has all of the updates on it. Okay? And leave what your, your comments are. Now, we also put, excuse me, a support card on the bottom. Now, we also put, excuse me, a support card on the bottom. You know, I'll be the first to admit, we were soliciting support, so there was a support card on the bottom, but there was also, if you have comments, go to this email address or you can leave it on the website also. And we sent that out, making sure that everybody at least had an opportunity to look at it. The community feedback, how was it incorporated into the plan? The various colors was what the original plan was. And then as it went down, we dropped off development. It was originally developed 60 acres. Based upon community feedback, we've now taken it down to 30 acres. And this was as a result of people saying, I want at least 250 feet setback. This is a drainage area, we have to make sure that we accommodate that. The current concept, and Joe covered a lot of this, is 84% of the property is maintained in open space golf course and a clubhouse. It's going to have a new clubhouse facility with restaurant, a bar, outdoor dining and open space. It's going to have walking trails. It's going to be age restricted, okay? Down at the bottom, the golf course will remain open and operational while the redevelopment studies are being completed. This was a primary concern with us. We wanted to make sure that the golf course stayed open. One for, because if it closed down, especially for more than three or four months, there's no way to bring it back. And we achieved that. We got a commitment from New Urban West to immediately study and address flooding, drainage, traffic and the golf viability. And the community outreach will continue throughout the planning process. This has really already been seen, we can come back to questions, but this is an aerial of what it, what it looks like. You can see the additional open space areas, the walking trails along the lake, lakes there between CCV and proposed resident, that's going to be walking trails all around those And it's consistent with the existing community, you know? The density is consistent, the architecture is consistent, the lifestyle, senior and over is consistent. And these are just some renderings, the new clubhouse, restaurant and bar, okay? We're restoring and revitalizing the clubhouse and grounds, so it will not only be a new clubhouse, restaurant and bar, but it's going to be outdoor sitting areas. It's going to be outdoor walking areas. It's going to be eight and a half acres of new neighborhood parks, including dog, several dog parks, large and small, that's one thing we learned.
[Laughter]
You don't mix the two. And then parks, trails and open space. And retaining the driving range, which we got input back that in order to have a viable golf course, we need the driving range. So we retain the driving range. And all of it is improved. We're not just talking about the more of the same, we're talking about revitalizing and improving. This is a, pictures of the types of housing that will be built. Obviously, one of the reasons we're going with senior housing is it gives a much better view shadow, excuse me. So we think that the community plan is worthy of your support, okay? It meets the requirements of the Camrio Springs community, okay? It saves the golf course, it preserves golf permanently, it revitalizes that portion of Camrio Springs, and we feel that it'll be a major addition to the community rather than a detriment to it. This reflects, as I said, and I'll just enter these in here. Over 300 signed support statements from residents of Camrio Springs, okay? Of the 900 people have given their input and we feel this is a community plan that the community thinks, this is what we need in order to preserve golf and to preserve Camrio Springs. What we're asking of you is to help us in that preservation and help us in that revitalization. We can make the golf course as nice as it was 25, 30 years ago, when it was one of the premier golf courses around. We can have a great restaurant, we can have a great bar, we can have a great outdoor community parks. We just need your assistance in approving the GPA referral so we can move to the analysis stage, okay?
Of course.
Now, that's good timing.
Absolutely. Wow. You get an A for that.
Yeah, yeah. I guess we're open to questions.
Perfect. I guess I will ask that. Jason, Han, do you have anything else to say or are you turning it all to Ron? And then we will probably have some questions.
Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions along with Ron.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're back on board in a paid position now, right? You just didn't come up just to join us for the fun of it.
That's correct.
So you now are the representative and your company is, okay, perfect. Questions? Mrs. Craven?
Yeah, right now, I, sorry. Right now, I just have a couple. This might be for Jason because it's in the information that was filled out and is in our packet. It says that the Camrio Springs Golf Course, in three places it says this, is currently zoned residential use. I'm just asking, if it's already zoned residential, why are we here?
Well, there's a distinction between the general plan designation and the zoning designation. And within zoning, it does allow residential to be developed because it was for agricultural.
But it doesn't have the general plan land use designation?
It does not.
Okay. That was one question I had.
I had the same question. Because when you say residential, it meant the very few houses, one per so many acres. That's what you were talking about, correct?
That's correct. And I think if you, if, in the event that the general plan was actually consistent with the zoning, I think just by the calculations alone, it would allow over a couple hundred homes.
Well, I'm not saying that, but what it sits as right now is, yes, it does allow houses of a certain amount and this is very few.
This is my questioning.
That's correct. That's correct.
Don't confuse it.
So as to, and I guess this is for Mr. Kestner, because you have said a couple times, there were 900 residents and in the written materials, it was 490. I understand that's the difference in timing. But what I'm wondering is, are those unduplicated residents or is it the same people coming over and over again?
It's, there's not total unduplication. There is some duplication, but we probably have about 325, 300 to 400 that are unique residents and then we have some that are duplicate. You know, in any series of open houses, you're going to have a series of people.
Right. So it was 900 people who showed up at the meetings, but not necessarily 900 unduplicated residents.
Exactly.
Okay.
And just a point of clarification, what we did on the open houses is, rather than just have a big open house somewhere and invite everyone, we had them at the individual HOA. We had some that were open to everyone that we had at the Orchid Room, the initial ones, that anyone could attend because we wanted a good diversity of opinion. Then we had, for the iterative process, we had open houses at the individual HOAs. And typically, what we'd have is we'd have one at CCV, we'd have one at the Springs, and then we have one at Courtyard, and then we would have one that combined Palmera, Tierra and Miramonte.
Okay. How many, do you have any idea how many total residents there are out there?
As far as residents, I don't know, as far as units, there's about 920.
920 units?
Yeah. No, pardon?
967 including Courtyard.
There you go. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have right now.
Mr. Chinsley?
Yeah, I have several questions for Mr. Han and Mr. Kestner. Take a chance and maybe take the opportunity and sit down and I want to compliment you for all of your efforts in this. And Mr. Han, I have a number of questions for you, if I may. First of all, I think the city clerk is going to hand you an exhibit, excuse me, a document that's from the city of Ventura. And there are copies for all of the council members that I'd asked Jeffrey to hand out at this point. And the document is a May 2017 golf course evaluation study for the city of Ventura's golf course system by pro forma advisors, which is a professional consultant in the golf field. And it was the analysis of reducing the existing 18 holes at the Buena Ventura course, the question of whether or not to reduce those 18 holes to nine holes. And I want to read you an excerpt that you have in front of you, it's yellow highlighted, and I'm just going to read the excerpt to you. From the city's perspective, the value of a nine-hole golf course operation versus the current 18-hole configuration is estimated in Table 7-2, which is also attached to your document. As indicated, reducing the golf course from 18 to nine holes results in a substantial decrease in net operating income. Revenues are reduced by about one-half, while operating expenses, many of which have a large fixed component, are reduced by only 35%. Thus, net operating income as a nine-hole layout is reduced by nearly 75% from the existing 18-hole golf operation. So what I want to, the first question I want to ask you is, is the economic sustainability of a course of various sizes, and I'll just pick three, nine, 12, 18, you can pick whatever size you want. Is that an issue that your company has preliminarily analyzed in conjunction with a revamping of the Camrio Springs Golf Course?
We have committed to the advisory committee that we would be analyzing all three formats of golf. And in fact, that's part of the reason why we turned to the advisory committee and advisory committee actually enlisted a number of local golf experts. And I personally, at this point, am not equipped nor qualified to answer such a question, but I'd be happy to turn it over to Ron Kestner for...
Well, that's okay. What I'm hearing...
I was going to say...
Can you come back up to the mic so that everybody...
I'm sorry, Mr. Kestner, go ahead.
The advisory committee had the same question. And we knew we were not experts in golf. And so we went out and solicited the advice of Gary Lewis, who is a golf expert, who has designed and managed over 100 golf courses, actually in the 70s managed the Camrio Springs Golf Course. And he, if you have, allow a moment, I'd like to call him up and have him address that issue because he advised us on that.
Well, perhaps he could, and I would appreciate, but perhaps we could, well, I'll tell you what, Madam Mayor, if you're okay with that, but I do have some more questions for Mr. Han.
Yeah, go ahead and finish that and then we'll go to, I don't know if he has the speaker sheet.
Does Mr. Lewis have a speaker sheet?
He doesn't.
Okay, so when it's his turn, we'll hear from him. But you have more for Mr. Han?
Oh, yes, I do. So, Mr. Han, what I'm hearing you say, and my question was really focused as you, forgive me, as the developer and the representative of the property owner, because you two are joined at the hip. You have not, what I'm understanding you to say is that you have not done, as of yet, that preliminary analysis relative to those various sizings. Am I, am I thinking of that correctly?
That is correct. We are asking for permission through the approval of a referral so that we can conduct those studies along with other necessary studies.
Okay. So based on that understanding, I'm looking at page one of the project information sheet that you submitted with the GPA referral application. And it's the second bullet. And it says that the goal is to permanently preserve golf at Camrio Springs, and Mr. Kestner in fact articulated that goal. And as a second point, your application in the summary of the community outreach section, which is for my fellow council members, it's on page nine, it's big page A20 of your agenda packet, that's the first bullet and it states, and I'm going to quote, it states in part that the concept plan for redevelopment of the existing course will be to, quote, "preserve golf and set it up for long-term self-sustaining success." And that's a quote from your application, right?
That is the goal.
You recall, that's the goal. What do you mean by, as the developer's representative, as the applicant, what do you mean by the phrase "long-term self-sustaining success"?
That it as a business, it has to function, that it as a business, it can't be losing money, that it as a business has to be profitable, and that's the goal.
Do you set any boundaries of over a period of time that is to occur?
From a period of time standpoint?
Sure.
We'd be happy to, we'd be happy to, like any business, it has to be able to, it has to be given enough time to take hold.
Fair enough.
And like any business owner, if we're developing that golf course, we'd give it the appropriate time, but also, these are all questions that really have to be answered by the golf experts and they have to advise us. And at the end of the day, we have to decide it's something we can deliver and that's the analysis we are prepared to embark on.
Okay. There is another part of your application and for my council colleagues, I'm referring to page A18. It's what's called the open space element, Mr. Han. It's on page seven of your application. And it states that New Urban West will, and I'm quoting here, "will explore various legal mechanisms by which the property, even if golf becomes financially infeasible in the future, will remain open space and be unavailable for future development of any kind," close quote. And that's the phrase directly from your application. Recall that phrase?
Yes.
Okay. What did you mean by the term, quote unquote, "financially infeasible"?
Well, one of the concerns we wanted to address directly from the community is that in the event, for whatever reason, that golf as a business is not sustainable there in the future, they were concerned, as both Mayor McDonald brought up, relative to, what do you do to protect it as permanent open space? So our proposal is, we would be looking, we would be willing to look at enough, number of different legal mechanisms, either a covenant, a permanent covenant over the open space area that is currently golf, so that no development in the future can take place.
Let me move to a slightly different question. Who makes the determination, as you see it, you know, looking out into the future, who makes the determination as to financial infeasibility?
Well, I think it's a number of different things. I think it's, for one, it's the market. We'll see whether or not the markets, if we do a good job of putting together the right format of golf and the business is sustainable, and I think where you're leaning is, is it the community, is it the city, is it the developer? Who determines, who sets the threshold whether or not that golf operation is profitable or sustainable? And we're open to defining that with the advisory committee and city staff.
Well, you see the, one of the directions in which I'm going, and obviously, free market has an awful lot to do with it, right?
Of course.
But relative to a determination of whether the golf course is financially infeasible, I don't, help me understand here, I wouldn't see anybody making that determination but the folks who are actually running the golf course, right? It's not going to be the city.
Well, there could be transparency to the city.
Well, no, but let's, it would be, ultimately, that's a determination that's made by whoever is running the golf course. Would you, would you say that's an accurate understanding?
It is a business like anything other. It needs to be self-sustaining, absolutely.
Well, have you preliminarily determination, made a determination or considered who would make that call on whether or not it's financially?
No, we have not.
Okay. My understanding is, and I know there was a communication from the, and I'll just say the advisory committee, for want of a better term, thank you, Mr. Craven, that they've indicated that the golf course and other recreational amenities would be, and I'm going to use the term "HOA-controlled" in quotes, that was my understanding. Is that something that you've considered? And if so, what does HOA-controlled mean? And this may be a question for, not just for you, Mr. Han, but it may be a question for Mr. Kestner. I'm just, I would like to know the, I would like to know what you mean by HOA-controlled, because that has a number of, that could have a number of different meanings.
I think when we, when we sent out that communication, what we were looking at is certain amounts of the open space, particularly in the parks, and that element will be under HOA control in the development.
Oh, you didn't, you were excluding out the golf course operation from that?
The golf course was a totally separate standalone entity.
Okay, okay, all right. Next question, Mr. Han, have you preliminarily reviewed, as New Urban West preliminarily reviewed, whether there is sufficient space within the 182-acre parcel area, which is no longer seen up there, but whether there's sufficient space within the 182 acres to accommodate a full 18-hole golf course while still accomplishing the goals that are set forth in the concept plan?
We have a number of members from the community who have presented us with an 18-hole layout. We've preliminarily looked at it, again, as to whether or not those layouts make sense, those layouts work. That is all to be worked out if we are able to...
And what preliminary conclusions, if any, did you draw based on that review?
No conclusions. No conclusions.
On page 15 of your applica, I only have a few more questions, and thank you for your latitude, Madam Mayor. On page 15 of your application, which for my council colleagues is page A26, there is a map, and the area where a revised golf course location that has been drawn by the engineers for New Urban West has been marked with the appendage, quote-unquote, "golf slash open space." That's what it's marked as, and it's, and it appears in two, I think actually, three separate areas on that one map. Why has that dual terminology been used?
Golf would be considered an open, an aspect of open space. There's, there's, other than that, there's no other reason.
So, there's no intent that that be mutually exclusive?
That is...
That those terms be mutually exclusive?
That is correct.
There was a, an email sent by, and I'm going to say again, the advisory committee, with apologies to Mr. Kestner, the advisory committee, it's provided to the city council, its written position on this GPA referral request, and it's very similar in nature to, I believe, the concept plan that was up on the PowerPoint that Mr. Kestner provided. And it indicates to us that the committee supports the referral only if several conditions are met by New Urban West. And are you, are you familiar with that?
I am familiar with that.
Okay. Does New Urban West and the property owner agree to each and every one of those conditions?
I can tell you that the fact that the property owner has signed the application for the referral, that, that is a commitment that those, that we will meet, and the property owner has agreed to.
Okay, so I'm, I'm understanding you to say yes. The answer to that question is yes.
Absolutely.
And then, last question, I want to focus on an issue that's very important to me from an environmental standpoint, and there are obviously a lot of environmental issues at play here, including traffic, wildlife migration, et cetera, et cetera, but I want to focus on floodplain and hydrology for a minute. Has New Urban West's engineers made at least a preliminary analysis of the floodplain and the drainage constraints that are involved in citing houses in the, what's called the residential planning area that was on the concept plan Mr. Kestner showed?
New Urban West has experience working within the floodplain, and I do want to clarify one aspect of part of the presentation, which is that there is, there is floodway on the property itself. The floodplain exists, but the floodway actually exists outside of the property. And FEMA...
Fair enough.
County Flood Control, City Public Works have rigorous, rigorous standards for analyzing whether or not a developable area can be created outside of that floodplain. We've processed a number of CLOMERS, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with CLOMERS or the conditional letter of map revision, which is done by, ultimately done by FEMA, and we will follow those. If we cannot provide a safe, developable area based on the FEMA, County of Ventura, City Public Works, all of the standards, there will be no development. We have to meet those standards.
Yeah, I recall when we were back here in January, we saw some pretty dramatic pictures of that, of that golf course under a material amount of water at that time, and, and that is directly the area that, that is marked as the residential planning area in the, in the application. So, I take it that those pictures did not deter you?
No, they did not.
That was almost, that was almost a rhetorical question, but that's fine, I'll ask it in the affirmative.
I understand.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions for the moment. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
I think he went over half my, almost all of my questions, in fact, but Tony did a good job. I've been here 37 years and been out there when it's flooded three major times, where it's gone up to the, you know, the doorstep, I call it, of some of the mobile homes down that end. And if it hadn't been for certain people coming in, helping bulldoze out of channel and things of this nature to get more water out, and also firemen coming to help, help with sandbags and other things, we could have had a real problem. And that's where the water spread out. I've seen some pictures here someone sent me, but I've seen it worse than this.
Sure.
Okay? I find, I can't wait to see how you're going to solve that. That's going to be a difficult challenge, because you don't want to hit one side and drown the other.
It is the first study we will conduct, one of the first studies, immediately.
Yeah. The other one is, I just, I fool around here trying to do a golf course for you, I can get 18 holes out of it anyway. If you need some help, let me know.
I've heard that.
I've played that golf course many times, not lately, because it's gone down the, gone down the tubes, but I just play it all the time, and I got familiar with a lot of the holes and what's going on there. And so, I can't wait to see what you come up with, and hopefully, it won't be 12 or nine holes.
Well, if we're successful, we hope to have you back.
Okay, good. That's all I need.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven.
I think Mr. Kilday...
Oh, did you? I'm so sorry.
Just one question. Eight and a half acres of a new park, including a dog park, in a passive recreation area, can you define for me a passive recreation area and what that potentially could be?
Sure, it's simply to mean as opposed to active. The residents have made clear that they're, they're not looking for ballfields with nightlights and those types of things. So, to prevent those types of potential intrusions, any, any recreational element would be a passive park that doesn't have, that doesn't have events and those types of things.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I did have some other questions, and I couldn't find them at the time because they were buried under my packet, but when I was asking questions earlier, there's some things I'm unclear about. I know everybody wants to keep the golf course, and what configuration is, is not clear, but at the end of the day, if this project were to be, if this request were to be approved, and you went ahead and you came back with a project that we approved, who would, in the end, own the golf course?
The golf course would be a, at least for now, there are options on the table, but one of them, which is a strong one, is that it's a standalone business, that today, many of the golf courses are really, they're, they're running in the black because they have a robust food and beverage, food and beverage business. This place currently does not. And once that is up and running, and the golf course along with it, as a, as a, as a sustainable business that's running in the black, that is going to be valuable, and somebody will want to own it and run that.
So, Mr. Richards would then sell it?
That is correct.
Okay. To an unknown person. And this will all be developed...
Chair, if I may, just, just to clarify, Mr. Richards would not be selling it, New Urban West, upon approval of a project, New Urban West will close escrow. Any further dealings that the city has or the residents have will all be through New Urban West.
Okay, then I just changed the wording. New Urban West would sell it to somebody or to some company?
That is correct.
Okay, and that would be the whole kit and caboodle, the restaurant, the golf course, the...
It's all part and parcel.
And is it anticipated that that's going to be built at the time or before or during, while the residential units are being built? Or does it come after, or what's your planning on that?
Currently, the, the thought is it would have to happen at the same time. We feel it's important, as a recreational element, even for the new homeowners, that those facilities are there. So, at the beginning of the construction for the residential, your public works and your planning department is going to give us a list of conditions of approval that, at a certain time, before we can actually pull such permits or occupy a certain number of homes, certain facilities have to be in place.
Okay. So, this golf course restaurant business will be built, and that'll be a risk you'll take to, or is that going to be added into the price of the new homes?
I'll answer, I'll answer it simply in that, yes, it is, it is all a risk we take. The processing here through the, through the general plan referral, building of the golf, reconfiguring of the golf course, the rebuilding of the brand-new clubhouse restaurant and bar, all of those things are things that we take on as a risk. That's just part of being a developer.
As separate from, will there be a component on the price of the homes that goes toward this?
It, the price of the home is the price of the home. It's, it's what the market will bear, and if we can, if we, if we can't make that work, like, we've been in situations where the market doesn't, we go through a whole extensive process, we get to the end, and like 2006 and 2007, the market is not there to cooperate with us. But the goal here is to have a successful development that, that combines both the senior residential community, the new senior residential community, along with a revitalized golf course with restaurant and bar and other facilities.
I don't think you answered my question, but we do have a whole lot of houses being built out here right now, as a result, the number is a result of the fact that they had plans approved, and then it didn't happen because of the economic downturn. That was an aside. You don't understand, it, it's just about as much as you didn't answer the question I asked, but that's fair. Okay.
Anything else?
That's all.
I have just a couple for now, and we may have more at the end as we, as we work through this, but just to make sure I understand, you build all of this, and we have these beautiful open space and walking trails and a lake and all these other things, who maintains those?
The, the walking space, you're referring to the trails and the parks?
Yeah, forget the golf course for a moment, let's move over to everything else.
Yes, again, to refer back to Ron's question, what we'll be looking at, along with your planning department, is whether or not those facilities are best to be maintained as part of the golf operation or to be maintained by the HOA of the residential operation. So, it'll, it'll be decided one way or the other, we'll, we'll do what's, what's most financially prudent.
So, when we talk about the HOA, we're talking about the new HOA for the new development?
That is correct.
Or for all the existing HOAs?
No, the new HOA. There will be no new, there will be no financial burden on any of the existing homeowners and residents.
Very important, okay. Let me see, I had one more. Oh, of all the residents that are now on a golf course, whose property faces one way or another the golf course, will they all still remain in that same situation, being on the golf course, or will some of them switch to open space?
Yes, in fact, some of them, in fact, have voiced that they actually like being in front of open space. So, there is an aspect, there's a section, as you can see on the plan, over in the CCV on the furthest left, that will now be purely reserved for open space, a lake system that they currently have, the water is on, water is there, so on and so forth. And that would have trails, and they would not, some of them have actually said it's actually, it's actually nice that they wouldn't have golfers in front.
They don't have the golf balls coming in, huh?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And I think one more, and maybe this just goes on my list if, if we move this forward to have you really look at, but when we talk about seniors, I think the one thing that we hear a lot of is they want single-story residences, so I hope that that is a, a major portion of, yeah. Of all these buildings you see out in Springville being built, they're all two-story homes, and it makes it very difficult. So, if we're talking about their senior community, I hope we're talking about single-story homes.
Yes, we will have both. The, the single-story or the two-story that have, in the market, proven to be very successful is whether or not you have a two-story home, what's on the second floor may just be guest rooms or, or an ancillary room. All of the living is done on the first floor.
Good, okay. So, we hear that all the time. We need single-story homes. Yeah, there are a lot of two stories, and, and obviously, you get more square footage if you do two-story, but that may not be what they want. Anything else for Mr. Kestner or Mr. Hahn at this point in time?
Oh, I'm sorry, just one. You have wildlife corridor kind of going through there, you know, through the area. I've got so many pictures here, people sending me pictures of, of everything from, what do you call it, raccoons to deer to everything that's out there. And I've seen cougars out there chasing rabbits before, early in the morning. So, I know that's a wildlife corridor, and when it gets early in the morning or late in the evening, are they going to be able to peruse or go through that down to the river?
Yes, in fact, the, the purpose of retaining that, in addition to, for, for purposes of drainage, is that we had, I think Meryl Burgie is here tonight, she had advised us, as part of the advisory committee, that, that connection is important to remain, and as we work through the process with the planning department, I'm sure there will be ample opportunities to ensure that that continues.
Good.
Anything else, Mr. Kilday?
Just have one really quick question, and I want to definitely hear from the public, but will it be an economic impact study also done along with this? And what I'm thinking of, of course, we do not want, we hear a lot about property values and whatnot, will it be an economic impact study also, where your company, your firm look into that?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. We'll have the, take public comments, and very well, at the end, if there's something you want to add, we will certainly give you time for that, and maybe a few more questions. Thank you. Okay, I have quite a few here, and as I mentioned earlier, about 9:30, we will take a short 10-minute break, but we will start working our way through it. Again, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have the three minutes. So, we will start with Bob Spielman.
Yeah, I know the feeling.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, or Mrs. Mayor McDonald and city council members, staff. My name is Bob Spielman, my wife and I live at 57 Margarita in Camarillo Springs Country Club Village. Many of you know me, and I've been here simply on the fact that I've been here many times fighting for our community, and tonight is no different. But tonight, I would like to talk about the facts of this situation. All the ladies and gentlemen here tonight are here because this is very important to them. But I feel the majority of the people approve this, and I ask that the people that are in opposition think about what the general plan amendment really is. This is not an approval to build a project, this is approval for New Urban West to work with the professional city staff, members of the ad hoc committee, members of the community, and others, so that we can design and put a scope of work together for a project that we will all be proud of. If without these studies and this valuable information, it is, we are unable to make a clear decision on whether this will be a sustainable project or not. So, so everyone knows, this can take years, and the community residents have more power after the approval than they do before to stop the project. But the best part of getting the approval is the New Urban West has agreed to keep golf alive and the golf course open during this process. That's a good thing for all of us. They've also made a commitment to all of us, be going forward, Camarillo Springs residents will continue to have a voice in this process, and this is a very good thing. I can't speak for everyone here tonight, but I speak for the majority of CCV homeowners. We feel this is a viable project for us. We want to preserve golf, open space, age-qualified housing, and the serenity of the way of life we have grown to love. We believe conceptual plans provided here tonight provide most of the qualities we're looking for. So, I ask the council members to approve this general plan amendment. I also like to ask the opposition to allow the professional city staff and New Urban West the opportunity to do something exceptional with a piece of property that has been decaying for years. Remember, there is plenty of time to stop the project if the promises are not kept. So, again, I request the city council to approve the general plan amendment referral. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm glad you added the word referral at the end there, so it's just a referral, it's not the general plan amendment. Next, we have Tom... Next, we have Tom, I can't read with my glasses, Tauntz, T-O-N-T-Z, Tauntz. See, I'm the opposite of everybody else. I can't read with my distant glasses.
My name's Tom Tauntz, and I live in Camarillo Springs in the Miramonte section. And I was actually born in Camarillo a long time ago. Unfortunately, my parents moved away, so it took me many years to get back here. I've been a golfer at Camarillo Springs since the mid-'70s, and in 1989, I moved to the, what I call, the island of Camarillo Springs. And I call it an island because it's a very unique neighborhood, it's a very unique place. When I was standing on that 10th fairway on that lot that they were developing, I found a sense of serenity and peacefulness that you don't find in many places in Southern California. It also lacked three things that made it a great place to live. There was no gas station, there was no grocery store, and there was no signal light. But as Bob Dylan sang in one of his songs, "Times, they are a-changing," and we are now facing a crossroads. We have the choice of bringing back the island of Camarillo Springs for future generations to enjoy or to let it deteriorate into an eyesore. We are dealing with a developer who appears, in my opinion, to want a win-win situation. This is the best of both worlds. Let's give them a shot at continuing our island of peace and serenity that it has been and hopefully will maintain for the future generations who are going to live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Charlie Wilson, and after that, we have Chanel Limone.
Mayor McDonald, city council staff, good evening. My name is Chuck Wilson. I live at 75 Margarita Avenue on the 15th fairway, where we enjoy watching the wildlife, the lake, and the wide-open spaces that the golf course provides. My initial response was to fight any development. I like it the way it is, other than a little maintenance on the golf course, which has been needed for the last 10 years that we've lived there. I've actually been part of the Camarillo Springs Advisory Committee. I have talked to several residents. In fact, we've gone up and down the streets asking them to please support the New Urban West study. I feel that New Urban West has listened to our community's concerns. We have been loud and clear about what we do and don't want. The plans to date show that they have listened. We have various serious concerns regarding our future if you deny the New Urban West's request to study the feasibility of this project. The golf course will close and be fenced and covered with weeds. The lakes will no longer be maintained. We have seen the water rise 6 to 8 feet during back-to-back storms. How will floodwater escape with the course in disrepair? I also believe there is a misconception that the city has the authority to force Mr. Richards to keep the golf course open, operating in good condition. I think that's not true. The plan by New Urban West will preserve golf at Camarillo Springs while they evaluate our area. I believe this plan to be worthy of further study. I strongly recommend tonight that the city council vote yes to allow New Urban West to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And after that will be Greg Sayre, S-A-Y-R-E, Sayre, sorry.
Good evening, Councilmember Kildy, Vice Mayor Craven, Mayor McDonald, Councilmember Morgan, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Tremblay. It's great to be here among friends tonight. My name is Chantel Limone, and I'm a lifelong resident of Camarillo and a three-year resident and owner in Camarillo Springs. I'm a licensed real estate broker, and I'm the director of marketing for Remax Integrity in Camarillo. We've all heard those three little words in real estate, location, location, location. As part of my job, I market homes in Camarillo Springs as being part of a golf course community, especially highlighting views and lifestyle. Whenever we get a listing in the Springs, we market it as being part of a golf course community as we recognize the value in this location-based selling point. I'm part of a group that believes in preserving golf at Camarillo Springs. I feel that by preserving the golf course, adjacent property values will be supported. Additionally, I believe by improving the golf course, clubhouse, and amenities at Camarillo Springs, adjacent and future property values will increase. If golf ceases to exist at Camarillo Springs, there will be an immediate effect on adjacent property values. In my opinion, values will decline, and properties situated near an obsolete golf course would actually be detrimental to marketing and selling efforts. New Urban West has offered a solution to keep the golf course open and maintained with an approved GPA referral tonight. Together with our community, we've worked hard to outline a plan which includes both the preservation of golf and new housing, which we feel is a plan worthy of further study. I am appreciative to have been included in this conversation. As Mr. Vaca mentioned earlier, future public hearings before the planning commission and city council are required before any approval of a land use amendment. We understand that the plan presented tonight is not one that is set in stone, simply a starting point to be studied, considered, revised, debated, and decided on in the future. So much weight is given to the referral process tonight, when in actuality, it's more of a formal green light to allow further study of this plan. If approved, the fiscal impact to our city is zero. The fiscal impact of a closed golf course in Camarillo Springs could be much more significant, and I am not in favor of taking that risk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Greg Sayre next. Sorry, I said with my glasses, I look like an H and not a Y. Sorry about that.
Hi. Hi, Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to come and speak with you tonight.
You give your name for the record.
Greg Sayre.
The right way.
Sayre. I live in Camarillo Springs. I got involved in this project last year. I'm a golfer. I'm on the board of directors of the Senior Men's Golf Club at Camarillo Springs, and I'm the tournament director. And even though I live there, I'm really passionate about golf. I really got involved because I wanted to see golf preserved. When the golf course became sold, there was a lot of fear that spread across the community, and especially the golf guys. There's about 40 of us that play every Monday, and we were wondering if the course was going to stay open or closed. We didn't really know what to expect. Jason came to the golf club and asked to speak with us and start talking about, thinking of ways that we could compromise and plan to allow some residential construction and still find a way to preserve golf. And so we began to have these little roundtable discussions. From that, we then decided to reach out to all the members of the community that lived on the golf course, and we developed a concept that we would develop, have intimate meetings of 10 to 12 people over a period of three days, so that we could explain to them what was going on and try to dispel some of the rumors that were false, and try to get our hands around what we could do to help and solve the problem. So we invited, in fact, a lot of these people here tonight came to those original meetings. There was about 160 people. Wow, that's going by quick.
It does. Talk fast. Yeah, you gotta keep going.
Anyway, we think that the golf course can be revitalized, it can become a jewel in the city. We'll have people from all over coming to want to play with the new clubhouse. It used to be great, it can be great again. And a lot of us golfers are prepared to volunteer and do the work that needs to be done to start now, even though this may take three years, two to three years, to do these studies. We can start now and probably change the opinion of all the rest of the golfers in the community within just a couple of months. So I think we're going to have a really great success story in the end.
Great.
Vote yes.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have John Gardner, and then after that, Merrill Bergy.
I live at 6061 San Dimas Avenue. We live on the 8th fairway, and we do collect golf balls. My wife and I looked for several years until we found just the right place in Camarillo. We lived in Agro for 40 years. We paid extra to be on the golf course. We spent a lot of money renovating our home, thinking this was going to be our beautiful final resting place on earth, and we love it, and we don't want it to change. However, I'm a business person. I'm still working. I believe in free enterprise, and so we realize that a property owner has a right to develop. Now, one thing that's not been mentioned here tonight, New Urban West is not, as I understand, a representative of the owner. They are a business-oriented developer who, if this process is approved, will begin to put option money on the table to acquire the property from the property owner. So I've been part of the committee. I've been impressed with Jason and his team in terms of being professional, understanding. They've already made concessions. So I'm excited about the idea of working with professional people to create something of value and as quickly as possible moving the owner, who I understand may not be a nice guy, out of the picture. So I would urge you to vote yes.
Great, thank you very much. And next, Merrill Bergy. There she is. And then after that, it'll be Glenn Melnick.
Hello, City Council, Mayor McDonald, and council members. Thank you so very, very much for once again being here on a Wednesday night and considering general plan amendment referrals and the, all the testimony that citizens have input here. But I have, my name is Merrill Bergy, and I know I don't live in Camarillo Springs, I live on Natalie Way, but I was asked to be involved with the advisory committee to begin with, to kind of help pull people together. And as you know, one of what I feel is most important in this development process is transparency and inclusiveness and working with as many groups, stakeholders as possible. And I have found that that was the process that ensued. It was very, very well-done, very thorough. And if you Google New Urban West, they have a sterling reputation. I think that considering the alternatives, this, we are in very good hands going forward should you approve the general plan amendment referral. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oops, come back, Merrill.
So if we approve this, and you're not going to come down and tell us not to approve development?
This is, I have never said...
No, I think it's a fair question.
I have never said not approve development. What I think is the most important thing is that we are all included in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So Glenn Melnick, and then Everett Wells.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Glenn Melnick. I'm the current GM and tournament director at Camarillo Springs. I have an inside view and firsthand knowledge of the workings of the course operations. I'm here this evening to offer my observations and knowledge about the state of things at the course. As you are probably aware, the golf course badly needs investors, investment, and repairs. There has been decades of low investment in the course by the previous owner. It's without a shadow of a doubt that what is being proposed will breathe new life into a facility that needs to be revitalized. I would also like to share some important timetables tonight. Here are the facts. The current management contract expires October 1st. In five days, my entire staff could be out of a job. I have confirmation that no extension of my existing contract will be made if this general plan referral is not approved. As the GM, I have yet to see or hear a placement management company contact me or my staff to keep the course open past October 1st. What I have been able to confirm is that New Urban West has contractual agreement with the property owner, that the course will remain open and in the business as usual provided the GPA referral is approved tonight, and the New Urban West begins to move forward in the working of the city, in working with the city. I see hundreds of golfers and residents each week, and there are a lot of faces here tonight that I see on the course. From what I have heard, the consensus in the community is that we need to study the community plan. I see nothing but positive, both short-term and long-term, if New Urban West gets to move forward. Approving the referral request tonight creates certainty for my staff and community. Denial creates huge risk that may really harm folks. I respectfully ask the city council to approve the GPA referral and keep the course open. Thank you.
Thank you. Everett Wells next, and after that, Gary Lewis.
Mayor, City Council members, I'm here in...
You need to give your name just for the records.
Oh, my name is Everett Wells. I live at Camarillo Springs Mobile Home Park, and I'm here in support of a yes vote for the general plan referral. There's not much I can add to what the people before me have said, except that I was here in January when it was recommended that New Urban West go back and get with community. And they have met us more than halfway. And it is my feeling that if this general plan referral is not approved, it would not be a good thing for our community. So thank you for your attention.
Great, thank you. Gary Lewis, and then I think it's Jeffrey Wilson? Or it could be Gary Wilson. You can choose.
My name's Gary Lewis. I live at 345 Avocado Place in Camarillo. I agree with what most everyone has said in an effort to be quick, and urge you and ask you to please approve this referral this evening. I have kind of a vested, unvested interest. I actually managed the golf course back in the early '70s. I have a lot of history there, and I remember the days, and I remember how it was in the old days, if you call it. I remember the folks in the park had their own golf carts, and they used them on the golf course. They came down to the restaurant, and it was really kind of a community happening, and it can be that again. I can tell you, I've been in the golf business 45 years, and I hadn't seen that golf course in 20 years when my wife and I went out there about six months ago. I promise you, I almost cried. When I saw what it was, I saw what it became, it was really disheartening. But I can tell you, and that location and the support of the community, it can be something special, again, very special, and I urge you to approve this referral. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm a homeowner in Camarillo Springs on the golf course on the 8th hole, and I'm asking the city council to please vote yes on the referral, and I will tell you why. My wife and I moved to Camarillo Springs in June of 2016. Our primary reason for moving was we wanted to retire on the golf course in an ideal weather climate, surrounded by nature. We found the perfect place in Camarillo Springs. You can imagine our disappointment when, five months later, we received a letter from Mr. Ron Richards stating that the golf course most likely will be closed and fenced. I am sure that every Camarillo Springs resident in this room tonight has their own story of why the Camarillo Springs means so much to them. Fast forward to today and how far our community has come to reach out... Fast forward to today, and how far our community has come to reach out and understand that we now have the -- we now have New Urban West in support. New Urban West has listened and responded to our request to keep the golf course open, maintain, and improve our community, and, most importantly, retain our property values. Our thanks to all of the community committees and the members who have devoted so much of their time and talent to saving our community and keeping it as a unique environment, which we all love, and is the reason why we all live here in Camarillo Springs. I want to thank the City Council for hearing and listening to our request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Cheryl Wilson.
I thought Gary was Sherry.
That's okay. It worked out.
Okay. Good evening.
You might pull the mic down, so we could -- there you go.
Good evening, Mayor McDonald, City Council members, and my fellow Camarillo Springs neighbors. My name is Cheryl Wilson. I live at 75 Margarita Avenue in Camarillo Springs. I live on the 15th Fairway. I spoke at the January City Council meeting, and nothing much has changed since that evening. My husband and I still live on the golf course with our serene, uninterrupted view of the golf course, the wildlife, and the mountains. That being said, everything has changed. The golf course is sold, and the likelihood of the course being maintained is gone. The threat of weeds and chain-link fences are very real. In January, I thought of Jason Hahn and his group, who comprised New Urban West as young people. Young people who don't know how to re -- how it is to reach the last years of your life, and how to have everything you've worked for being compromised. In the months since that initial meeting, I still like what I have, wish it could stay that way, but I know that that's not how life is. Since our first view of this young, ambitious group, known as New Urban West, my thoughts have changed, not only of this young group of people, but the project they are proposing. In a meeting at the Orchard Building, I asked Jason to come to my home, stand on my deck, observe my surroundings, and tell me just what he thought he could do to improve upon it. I was a little irritated. Jason did come to my house. He stood on my deck, and I think he liked what he saw. He has, I believe, taken into consideration many of the hopes and concerns voiced by the entire Camarillo Springs community. We've attended many meetings with New Urban West, and it is my belief that they have listened. Some of you are opposed to this study. Let me say to all of you who feel the way you do, for whatever reason, do not be naive. If you use the Camarillo Springs off-ramp to get to your home, you will be affected. Some of you never see the golf course. You know where it is, and you're happy that it's there. Not all the homes in Camarillo Springs have a view of the golf course from their windows or their decks or their backyard. But it is my belief that letting this huge body of land go to ruin, all of our property values will surely decline. Tonight, I'm asking you, please think outside the box. Ask our City Council to vote yes on the general plan referral. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mike Mishler.
You didn't warn?
Oh, sorry. And then Mark Malloy. How's that? You three must have come in together.
Good evening. My name is Mike Mishler. Good evening, council. You know me from the rec -- I'm a board member of Pleasant Valley Wreckin' Park. I'm here as a private citizen, so I don't want to get that confused or anything. I'm here in opposition to this referral process. I have three main points. They're pretty simple. The first one is what I call a failed business model. The landowner, as we know from previous meetings, believes that the golfing business is terrible and everything else, and -- but he still went out and bought a golf course, even though the business is supposed to be a terrible business to be in, then comes into the city and wants the city and the citizens of Camarillo to rescue him from his failed business model of a golf course. So, I mean, we don't need to do that. There's no reason to bail out a businessman just because he made a bad decision. That's the same thing for all the other businesses going on in Camarillo. The second one is what I refer to as a Pandora's Box issue, which is, we obviously have other golf courses in town. If the city allows this referral to go through, what's going to happen at the other golf courses? And we're just -- right now, we have a problem at Camarillo Springs. But if this -- if the council lets this move forward, people are going to look out there. Richard himself may just go over, take some money from here, and go over, buy another golf course, and come back in next year or two years later, and we'll have the same problem with three other sites across the community. We're not really solving anything. And the third and final one, and a lot of the citizens here think that this is going to be some type of final solution for the golf course. As Tony mentioned from the report that was done for the city of Camarillo, a city of Ventura, this recently, their two golf courses are making money. But their study clearly pointed out that if you shrink it down less than 18 holes, you're almost guaranteed to lose money. There's no way to make money off a golf course, long-term, if it shrinks under 18 holes. And if you look at their plan, there's no way to put an 18-hole golf course on what they're proposing. So they're going to end up with something less. Now, Hahn says that, well, it's going to be profitable and make money. I don't believe that. But even if that was true, then why -- if a nine or 10 or 12 golf course, a whole golf course can make money, why not an 18-hole, the current one? And the owner can simply sell it. If he doesn't like the business of being in the golfing business, he shouldn't have bought the property in the first place. And he can simply turn around and sell it to someone else who can run it the way it should be run for the city and the local citizens there, and have a full 18-hole golf course run the way it should. But that's not going to happen if the city moves forward on this proposal. And I think, long-term, that scenario you're looking at, only the first phase of the project coming back to the city again to haunt us, because the whole thing will eventually collapse under its own weight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mark is next.
I'm Mark Malloy of 104 Margarita in Camarillo Springs. Good evening, Mayor McDonald and council members. Please do not start the process of replacing half of Camarillo's largest public recreation venue with housing that was never anticipated in city planning and is not needed. This does not make Camarillo or the Springs a better place. New Urban West has spared no expense to portray this as a community-supported plan. Senator Kamala Harris once said that when someone is pointing a gun at your head and asks you a question, your answer will have little to do with the question. Months ago, Mr. Richards threatened me and my neighbors with immediate closure of the course. His survey crews had planted stakes with orange flags and painted fluorescent marks on the pavement, marking the edge of the course. His message is clear: Support redevelopment, or we'll fence it off and ruin your community. And we just heard from the general manager that that's now four days away. More threats. So when they ask for community support with this kind of duress, it's clear that what they claim to be support is just the result of what a few really hard-working and well-meaning people have done to try and prevent the trigger from being pulled. As a Camarillo Springs resident, I attended three of these meetings, and it was crystal clear from the beginning, what the community wants is to be left alone. Unlike the senior needs assessment study that the city and the Park District are doing, where there's independent analysis of the community's desires and conclusions reached using statistically verifiable data, these meetings were created simply to find out what amenities it was interested in, and then it was just presentations to support the proposal. It wasn't a meeting of community input. It was presentations of sales on the project. And don't be fooled by the claim of 30 acres of new housing. This project actually eliminates eight of the 18 holes, and 63 acres of what is golf course will now be out of play. Mr. Tremblay referred to the Ventura Economic Study, and I just -- it's unimaginable to me that if they're not happy with the prop on an 18-hole course, how are they going to be happy with the gross margin of a quarter of that on a nine-hole course? Well, the answer is, they can't. Both New Urban West and Mr. Richards know that the eight -- that a nine-hole course at Camarillo Springs is unsustainable. That is why the remaining holes are shown on the pres -- on their proposal as golf slash open space. They're very clearly ready to move in that direction. I ask that you deny this proposal and ask New Urban West to create a revised one that retains an 18-hole golf course, which is an absolute must to preserve golf at Camarillo Springs and preserve Camarillo Springs to be the community is now and should continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll have Robert Kelly, and then we'll take our break.
I'm Buddy Kelly. I sit on the Park and Rec Board, and I've done so for the past 11 years. I also am against the referral in this matter. I've looked at this situation clearly, and I have made the determination that, in order for the applicant to be successful, he has to convince everyone that less is more. Let there be no doubt, less is not more. It never is. The director -- excuse me. The -- one of the previous speakers mentioned that if this referral is granted, that there may be repercussions in the rest of the golfing community in Camarillo. But we have one other public golf course, and that's Sterling Hills, recently purchased. If this is referred and eventually becomes a fact, I can almost -- I have to believe that that particular owner is going to do the same thing, and he's going to have precedent. He's going to say, "Look, you did it over there, so why can't I make millions and millions of dollars off of my land? I never really bought it because I was interested in golf," just like the applicant in this case. I'm a member at Las Postes Country Club, and I have been for 20-something years. I can go play golf any time I want. Unfortunately, a lot of the rest of the community can't do that. And if we take one of the golf courses, which I think ultimately will happen, I do not believe that this land was purchased in order to do a smidgen of housing that was on the proposal today. I think ultimately, you buy land like this because you want to make a lot of money. It's long since been passed that people from LA and Orange County can come into this community and look at some nice plum, and then say, "I can make a lot of money off of that." And so I'm going to convince everybody something that isn't -- couldn't possibly be true, and then I'm going to do it, and then I'm going to beat foot it right out of town. That's what I believe is going on in this particular case. Talk is cheap, and many times, promises are too. I'm a lawyer. I know that. I -- there's no question in my mind that what is going on here is that there's a massive potential to make a lot of money, and that's what's driving this. And these people out here, I'm sure they're -- they --
You can go ahead and finish your thought.
I'm sure that they really believe that they're going to be bailed out, but I doubt that that will happen.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will take a short recess for about 10 minutes. I understand a lot of you came on a bus. Is that true? So I guess you can't leave, right? If I could ask everyone to please take your seats, so we can get started again?
11:30, we take another break.
As you're all settling into your chairs, let me make the announcement on our non-verbal cards. We have -- and these are the -- were the yellow cards. We have three that were opposed, and two had no comments, and this other one is concerned about the grading of the -- and just wondering exactly where everything is going. So a little concern on that side. We had 87 in support. Most of them do not have a comment. One question that one in support does have, though, and might add this to the list, they want to be sure you get -- they know how they're going to get rid of the water when it rains hard. The rest of them are very similar to what we're hearing people have spoken to us about, Yes. So the rest of them have been covered in other people's comments. So that takes care of our non-verbal sheets. And we now move back to our speaker cards. So the first person up would be Barbara Williams, and then Hal Hayman. Hyman, or it's Hyman, isn't it? Sorry. Oh, he left? Uh-oh. Barbara.
Barbara Williams. I strongly oppose any development of homes at the Camarillo Springs Golf Course. For many of the same reasons that Ador Lane Project and the Caneo Creek Development were rejected, so must this project. Many of you saw the flooded golf course last February. It did what it was supposed to do. The area they want to develop was flooded, and it was not even a 100-year or 50-year storm. The course flooded, and then the rain percolated down to replenish the groundwater used to water the course. We saw in Houston that paving over a floodplain can cause disastrous flooding. We cannot afford flooding in the existing homes. Without building any new homes, we already have a traffic issue. 101 North is clogged at all times of the day now. People exit at Camarillo Springs Road and use Ridgeview Ador to bypass, causing a backup at Poncho. We do not have a way to get into Camarillo in a reasonable time at many of the times during the day. I fear what would happen if there is a health emergency and the ambulance cannot get to Pleasant Valley Hospital in a timely manner. The draft EIR for Caneo Creek Development indicated there is residual DDT and other carcinogens in the farmland. The Camarillo Springs was once joined with that farmland, and very likely has the same carcinogens in the dirt under the golf course. The golf course, which was built before there were homes, and thus disturbing the soil, can be deadly. DDT causes Parkinson's. I provided proof to the council during the Caneo Creek hearing. Let's not forget about the potential of valley fever when disturbing the soil. More than half the community is seniors who cannot afford to have carcinogenic deaths coming into their homes. No amount of water trucks can stop that. While the drought is over, we still have a water issue, and another 250 to 300 homes will cause more wells to be drilled, making groundwater levels untenable. And let's not forget about the wildlife that make this open space either their temporary or permanent home. We have already encroached too much in their habitat, and we need to protect what is left. The advisory committee promoting an approval does not represent many of us in Camarillo Springs. They've convinced many of my neighbors that, in order to keep golf here, they must support the application and live with less than 18 holes. Less than 18 holes is death for the golf course. Whether you call this extortion or ransom to keep the course open, it is a scare tactic that should not be tolerated. The only option to get more revenue to keep the full 18 holes open is to fix up the clubhouse and restaurant and make it a wedding and banquet venue. That has not been considered since Mr. Richards could not make the hefty profit he desires. I just wonder how many people supporting this application actually do play golf. It is an open space when we moved here and should remain that way for all the reasons cited. I am counting on you to ensure the golf course is not fenced off nor allowed to die out if this application is denied. Thank you. I trust you will do the right thing and deny this request.
Thank you, Barbara. And just to make sure, Hal Hayman went home?
No.
Hal -- oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So next, Brian Morris. And then after that, will be Linda Mather?
Good evening, everyone.
And your name for the record, please.
Brian Morris, homeowner in Camarillo Springs. I live and work in my home with email. I was contacted only once by the committee for one meeting, and once by the mailer that they sent out. I live in Palmaris Townhomes. When I left last January's City Council meeting, I was proud and remain proud to be a Camarillo Springs resident. We had descended on City Hall and almost to a person protested the scraping away of our 18-hole golf course, but we also protested the ruin of our oasis, the shrinkage of our open spaces, the loss of our serenity with nature, the disappearance of wildlife. open spaces, the loss of our serenity with nature, the disappearance of wildlife, and even greater worries of flash floods and mudslides, all due to proposed new homes construction. We had stood up against a landowner who was threatening to surround his newly purchased $4 million golf course with a chain-link fence and let it grow into weeds. Lost my place. Ruining one's investment is a doubtful business decision. I was thankful and impressed with the city council, as they had done their homework on the new owner and his past projects. The city council denied the GPA referral request that evening. The council did suggest they could return with a plan, but with a plan, the majority of residents can endorse. In March, the owner's development company, New Urban West, joined with an ad hoc committee whose special interest is to save golf in Camrio Springs. Together, they scheduled a few community meetings, and tonight's proposed concept is the ever-changing result. They replaced our existing 18-hole golf course with a hopeful nine-hole golf course, but in turn, they've added 300 unwanted homes. This is not all about golf. There are over 1,000 homes in Camrio Springs, and only 177 homes are on the fairway. The vast majority of residents live beyond the fairway, and with only six days' notice, they know nothing about this meeting tonight. Many know nothing at all about this concept, and others have only skimmed what little they received and questioned the authority, as there is no consensus. By keeping the owner's threats alive to destroy golf, a special interest group of residents was skillfully organized, dined, rallied, and even bussed here tonight by New Urban West. They do not represent a majority of the residents. We ask that the city council deny the GPA referral request, thus helping the owner decide to sell or lease the golf course as is. Thank you. And to all of you, you do have a choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we have Linda next, and then Deborah Updike?
Good evening. My name is Linda Mather, and my husband Jim and I are homeowners at Camrio Springs. I'm here to state that the Camrio Springs Ad Hoc Committee and Urban West do not represent my husband and I in their desire to add up to 300 homes on half of the 18-hole golf course that exists there now. At last week's open house sponsored by the ad hoc meeting in Urban West, as they were sharing their presentation, I overheard a woman in the audience comment she had no choice. She wasn't alone, as another said the same thing. I believe that many have been led to believe they have no choice. Based on this information, I submitted a statement of opposition in our neighborhood network. We had others state their opposition as well. Our hearts desire is that this referral be rejected, but at least delayed, so that we can have time to research how many more oppose this project. Of the six HOAs in Camrio Springs, our HOA was never included in announcements of meetings or open houses. Our HOA represents 125 homes. I only found out about the open house we attended because it was forwarded to us by a friend of an HOA that was receiving notices. We received the mailer that only gave us the option to approve. It was only at this last open house meeting that we heard of this council meeting, otherwise we wouldn't even be here. So I ask that you please consider a request for time to allow the opposition a fair chance to band together to voice our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deborah? And then Bob Markleese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, and of course, staff, who's done all this prep work for us. Thank you very much. I just want to say that I do approve of the General Plan Amendment referral going forward, even though I do not approve of the general concept. And I think it's for staff and for the council members to determine that on their own and how well we're going to implement a plan for this property that actually gives us the legacy that this community, that the whole community of Camrio deserves. This can be potentially a legacy community if we look at it carefully, then we decide. And if we absolutely decide, staff, council members, and everyone in the community decide that that's our, that that's our priority. If we don't decide that a legacy project is our priority, then we're going to get much less than that. And if we have to make a decision between two evils, you know, I honestly believe that New West is not an evil, but I know that, I know what the evil is, and it is the elephant in the room tonight, that in the form of Mr. Richards. So we have to go forward, one way or another. We have to find our way, and we have, and we've come far since January, but my general feeling is that we don't have a project that is legacy-oriented. It's not sustainable. It doesn't have a green component. It doesn't have enough of a green component for that particular area and the wildlife and everything else that exists there. It doesn't, we're not, we've hardly spoken about infrastructure, hardly at all. We've hardly spoken about any of the aspects of infrastructure, which are so very important to the environment of that region. And so I would ask the council to seriously, seriously consider this proposal even after the referral is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record, because we do tape it, and I didn't, I didn't-
Deborah Updike. I'm sorry. And I am a 17-year resident of Camrio Springs. People may not believe that. Most people don't believe that, but I have lived in the community for 17 years.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bob Merrilies. I live in Leisure Village, but I was a resident of Camrio Springs, specifically in Ramati, and lived on the 10th Fairway for 10 years, up until a couple of years ago. I read the agenda report, most of it anyway, a lot of duplication there, but, and one of the things I came up with out of that was that virtually everywhere where it says that golf will be a part of the project, there's weasel words that say maybe. For example, on page 17 of the report, bullet number two, permanently preserves golf at Camrio Springs. Bullet number two. Seven bullets down, includes a study of the long-term feasibility and viability of golf formats. So you can't have it both ways. Either you permanently propose preserve golf at Camrio Springs, or you do a study. So for that reason, I'm, I share a lot of your skepticism, which I've heard throughout the evening. I've also heard on page 18, the Recreation Element section says, "The concept redevelopment plan works to preserve golf in the Camrio Springs property in perpetuity." You've got to be kidding me. There's nothing perpetuity. Five years from now, who knows what the, what the conditions might be, and you cannot say that it'll be, that a golf course is going to be there in perpetuity, or any business for that matter. So for those reasons, I'm very skeptical about the golf issue. I'm not opposed to golf. I don't play it, but I don't object to those who do. Secondly, I noticed on page two of the General Plan Amendment application, the actual application, page 13 in your book, assessors' parcel numbers. They list every parcel number in the three major areas that were depicted on the, on the screen a little while ago. And if, in fact, they're only going to develop 30 acres on one parcel, why would we propose to change the zoning on the other parcels? Why not just leave them rural exclusive? That's what they asked for. So I'm urging you to, if you, if you can approve it with, with that condition, that it only include that parcel, then that's, I can get along with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pete Thaxton? Thaxon? And Carolina Howell? Hewell. Gosh, these glasses are getting Hewell. Sorry. Can't, either can't, I can't see you, so I got to pick between the two.
Hello again.
You give your name for the record, please. Yeah, thank you.
The last time I was here, I was president of the Springs HOA. I'm now a civilian again, so I don't speak directly for them.
Can you give your name for the record, though? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you give your name for the record? Just give us your name.
Oh, I'm Pete Thaxon.
Thank you.
I live on Tomo Street in, in the Springs.
Thank you.
I had some things to say that have been covered so many times, but I wanted to address one thing and counter some things it had, and maybe more to Mr. Tremblay than others because he asks specific questions. Do you know about Saticoy Regional Golf Course, sir? That's a, that's a nine-hole course, as has been since about 1931. It was the Saticoy Country Club until about 1970. It's, I don't have numbers, but it's very busy almost all the time, and it has separate teeing areas, so if you want to play two nines, you can play them two different ways. It's not a secret that the young people aren't feeling the shoes of us old guys as we die off in the numbers that they need, because they don't want to put that kind of time and money into it, and that's why a nine-hole course, to me, makes a lot of sense. I think it'd bring more youth into it. I think it takes good care of the seniors, and I think it would be viable along with upscale restaurants, upscale clubhouses, and I think it, I really think I'm speaking for the majority, even though some people have said no. We want you to uphold this and make it happen, and give Urban West the keynote to go on and see if they can develop this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolina, and then after that, Ted Kupal?
My name is Carolina Hewell, and I'm, I'm very glad to be here tonight. Thank you. I live in, I live in Camrio's-
You've got to pull that right up to you there.
Okay. I live in Camrio Springs. I'm a resident there for about 17 years, and I am part of the Palmiris Association. The homeowners association has not contacted the home areas where I'm living. I've just heard about this meeting that we will have one from, from neighbors. My concern is, the reason that I moved there is because I think the area is a gorgeous, beautiful area there. I love the green areas over there. I love the wildlife over there, and I've also seen the floods that happen over there and how high the rainwaters can get there. So my concern then is, if the homes are built there, I know there will be studies that will be made, but there is nothing really that can be done for that amount of rain. That's what it was made for. It's, it's a flood basin. It would be unconscionable to, to build homes in, in a floodplain area. But that is for others to decide the real truth there. But also, what I'm concerned about is it's a very confined area over there in Camrio Springs. To, to have more traffic going over there, to go up to, going southbound on the freeway, it's already a parking lot going over the freeway from Camrio Springs to Newbury to Wendy, takes almost 15 to 20 minutes in the morning rush hour, and to have more traffic, you would have to put in more signals and more traffic and the like. Then does also talk about a dog park. I like dogs, but I, I have some concerns about, about the dogs. With a dog park area, you're going to have some dry, patchy areas. You're going to have some responsible dog owners and some irresponsible dog owners. The irresponsible dog owners will have something happen to the other dogs, or there will not be any cleanup, and who's going to be responsible for the cleanup of that area? There will be a lot of dust. There will be a lot of dog barking. If there's a lot of dog barking, there, that area is so confined that all of the, the barking dogs you can hear in, in the other areas. I can even hear the whistleblowing from the referees in the soccer area, and I live right in there in the Camrio Springs, and you can hear, even if there's a goal, you can hear everything that happens. So having the dogs barking there, if people are working at home, then, then you can't concentrate, and then also, if people need to sleep in the daytime, then you have just constant noise going on, so. But, so I'm just in favor of keeping the area wide open space if possible. Okay.
Thank you. So next, we have Ted, and then Susan Palmer?
Respected council members, my name is Ted Kupal. I'm a past president of the Camrio Springs HOA. You may remember that I addressed you in January of this year when I spoke vehemently against allowing the new landowners' ambiguous proposal for development of the acreage known as Cam Springs Golf Course. My concern was based on the past actions of the new landowners, deplorable history of steamrolling communities and city governments into allowing him to proceed any way he wished or retaliated aggressively against anyone who opposed him. I'm back tonight with a changed opinion, which is based on the collaborative efforts of your city staff, the Springs Advisory Committee, and the developer, New Urban West. Those three entities have met continuously for seven months to develop a plan which will enhance the golf course and the city. It will be built with only new housing to be senior-age-restricted dwellings. Newey has provided additional amenities, which have all been talked about, parks, buffer zones, nature trails. They have also mitigated my traffic concerns by locating the entrances to the new HOA on Ridgeview Road and not on Cam Springs Road. They seem anxious to work in harmony with the city and all the surrounding HOAs. I'm sure the project will be successful, thanks to Prop 13 reciprocity and the tens of thousands of equity-rich seniors in the San Fernando Valley wanting to escape from LA's problems. However, I do offer a note of caution. You may recall that when Barclay Hollander originally developed the Cam Springs project in the early 1970s, oh, I forgot, those documents were mislaid, I'm sorry, all five communities were supposed to be age-restricted. Somehow, the city fathers allowed them to complete the project. And extemporaneously, based on some of the discussion, PGA is now promoting "Take Time, Play Nine" because they know millennials will not support a five-hour run of golf, and the only golf courses in the next 20 years that are going to make money will be nine-hole golf courses. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Susan, and then Debbie Persuri? If you'll state your name for the record, then we'll know we get it right.
Hello there. Thank you for letting us come and talk tonight. There's been a lot of work put into this. First of all, my name is Sue Palmer. I live at, I live at, where do I live? I live at 14 Paseo Margarita in Camrio Springs. I lived, I moved out there about two years ago. I have two, two trains of thought with, with me. One is I'm a homeowner out there, and the other is that I'm a real estate agent. And I loved what Chantel said. I mean, she hit it right on the head about the property values. I've watched over the last year, a year ago when this kind of came up, it was everybody that was on the golf course, they were terrified about their property values, and you know what? They should have been, because property values started to go down. We've just now started to get them to a point where they appear like they're going up again. And I believe that, that the enthusiasm about, about the committees that have been working out there, I think that people are listening to some of it. The personal thing that I have with, with, I would like to ask you to do, to let us do the referral. I think people are afraid of what they might find- I think people are afraid of what they might find, but I don't think we need to be afraid of that. We'll know more for what comes down the pike. You know, when they started to talk about nature trails and all that stuff, I started kind of getting kind of sentimental because I was a teacher. I had been a teacher for 34 years in Oxnard, and I taught all sorts of -- I taught health education. I taught Earth Day, Indian, the Chumash things. So every night when I go home, and I look at that mountain going home, I have history inside of me. I've been teaching for a very, very long time, and I see, you know, if we had a walking park out there with the golf course and stuff, that we'd be having all sorts of neat little things, you know, places where we read about the history of the county and I don't know. That's all I have to say, except surely, and everybody that's out there that didn't come to the meeting, that you're all watching on television, hi there. And once again, Chantel, you did a really good job on that.
Thank you. And we have Debbie next.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Persiri. I live at 53 Isabel. I'm here tonight in support of the development through New Urban West. During the last seven months, in January, I really wasn't for it, but going through the different steps, I want our golf course brought up to date, whether it's nine hole, 12 hole, 18. I do believe in the plans that have been presented so far, that we would like your yes vote on the referral tonight to keep our lifestyle and our property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beverly Raham, and Ellen Owens.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Ram.
Oh, my, I wasn't even close.
I know.
I apologize for that.
No problem. I live at 6263 Irina Avenue in the Springs. My backyard backs up to the ninth fairway. And a few years ago, I was a widow, and I lived in Newbury Park, which I thought was a wonderful place. And then I met a man that lived in Camarillo Springs on the golf course, and ultimately we got married, and I loved it so much there. And we were only married a little over a year, and he passed away, and I thought, what a wonderful place for me. Here I am alone again. I'm elderly, and I have so many friends and so much social life. And what I love is I can sit on my patio and watch the deer go down the fairway. And I have big, wonderful egret in my front yard, and I love the mountain, and I love Camarillo Springs, and I'd like to see it improved. I really would. I would like to see a beautiful clubhouse and nice things. And last Saturday, my daughter got married at Wood Ranch Country Club, and I got to see what New Urban West developed there. And I don't know if any of you have been there, but it's beautiful. And I think they're very, very qualified to make Camarillo Springs beautiful. And I would like to see the city council say yes to this referral plan, and I think it would behoove the whole community. And as we come over that grade and we look at that beautiful golf course, I think, you know, that cannot be replaced. It should be made prettier and better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question before she leaves. I wish I'd asked every one of you. If this came back, if this were referred, and it came back and it wasn't exactly what you thought it would be, would you come tell us and say that?
Yes.
Because sometime, it might not be back as what you want it to be.
True, true.
So I expect every one of you who are here now, holding signs and doing things, if it doesn't come back to satisfy you totally with the water and problems and all that, I'd like you to come back and tell us.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ellen next, and then Cynthia Kester.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Owens, and I live at 6327 Irina Avenue in Camarillo Springs, backing up to the ninth fairway on the golf course. My purpose in speaking is to strongly encourage you to vote yes on the referral this evening by the developer, New Urban West, so the results of our co-authored agreement can be investigated through various studies, an agreement developed by all of the communities in Camarillo Springs and the developer. In our process of developing this plan, many questions were asked, compromises were discovered, and solutions were found. You, as council members, asked what we wanted, and we worked diligently to arrive at appropriate, reasonable answers. We are very appreciative that you asked us what we thought. And now we have given you our results and hope you, in turn, will vote yes on the general plan referral. Is it a finished, detailed plan? No, for there is the unknown. For example, what would a fairway not needed for golf be like with regards to purpose and appearance? Yet it's a good plan, a good compromise, put forth by our community and worthy of future study. Should you vote no, closing the golf course will hurt us financially and aesthetically. Please don't gamble with our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Gail Edwards, and then Alfonso Boto. Oh, Cynthia, I'm sorry. Yes, Cynthia, and then Gail. You're all good at this. You can tell you've been having meetings.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and staff.
Got to pull that thing right up there and talk loud at us. There you go.
My name is Cynthia Kester. I live at 6329 Gettana Avenue in the Springs, and I've watched my husband work very hard on this over the last seven months. And there's just two things that I want to add, and that is that I support the referral. And the reason I support the referral is that I believe we still have options, and I trust the process that will come after a yes vote on the referral. I know that there are a lot of professionals working on, and I'm actually in awe of people that do what Jason does, and then, you know, they face these obstacles of the environmental reports and all these things, but I trust that process, and so that's why I'm asking for a yes vote. And I also believe that we have options. We still have many options. I believe that we can be innovative. I know that I've read articles about how golf courses are changing, and the professionals are looking at new ways of revamping golf. And I think it would be wonderful if we were among those innovators, so I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Gail.
Hi. My name's Gail Edwards. I live at 6049 Irina Avenue in the Springs, and much of what I was going to say has obviously been said by the other people that are for the approval. So I just wanted to say that Jason Hahn and New Urban West has earned my trust over the last seven and eight months, and I encourage the council members to vote yes on the referral to allow the studies to move forward. Thank you. And I will be back if it's not up to our approval.
I expect that.
We would expect nothing less of all of you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Alfonso Pertir Raboto.
Oh, see, I never would have got that middle name.
It's okay, don't worry.
Say it again for me. That's beautiful.
Alfonso Pertir Raboto.
Very nice.
Okay. I'm here to ask you to please vote no on this referral. I think that this is all a sales pitch from New Urban. They are just in the business on development. It's not about preserving golf for them, really. If it were about preserving golf, the actual owner would just fix the actual course and have a profitable business in there. The business here is buying cheap land, develop, sell expensive houses. To buy cheap land in Southern California, you can only buy places that are not allowed to be built off. If you buy farmland, they don't care about it. So they buy golf courses so people get scared because they are going to close the golf course, they are going to develop in there, or they are going to lose the value because it's going to be closed. So the question here is not really about golf, it's about money. You can see that there is about money because there are buses, there are free t-shirts. I just missed a pizza, but that's a different thing. The problem here is that they are going to build a nine golf course, they're going to keep it for as long as it takes them to save the new units that they are going to build, and then what? They're going to keep it? Their business is not golf. They are in this because their argument was the golf course was not profitable. So if 18 courses is not profitable, how they pretend to make a nine golf, a nine holes golf course profitable? I don't know. I don't think they don't either because they don't care. As soon as they finish selling everything, they just sell the golf course or just leave it go, let it go, and just forget about the thing and buy a new golf course in a different place, probably another one in Camarillo. So who knows? So anything, anyways, I'm against this project. I thank you for your time, and let's see what happens.
Thank you. And next, we have Teresa Robertson. Oh, she went home? Okay. And I can't quite read this one either. Is it J O L N? J O L N? I think it's a Z A R U D?
Yeah, I see.
Sorry. I almost looked like the pen was running out of ink, too. You'll give us your name, and then we'll know if I got it right or close.
It's John Zaroka. I'm a 17-year resident on Alborada here in Camarillo. We've had a business here for 31 years in the county, at the Buena Ventura Golf Course, as a matter of fact, at the Wedgewood Banquet Center. You buy, a lot of people in here have probably been to one of our events. We also own the Tower Club now. We've had about four years. And we also have had, for seven or eight years, Sterling Hills, the food and beverage operation there. I just recently was the one that bought the golf course, by the way. And if you want to question my motives and why I bought the golf course, I'd be happy to explain it to you sometime. I played golf here in town for years and years and years. It's been in my business. We now have 35 different facilities throughout the country, and all my travels and business dealings, I've happened to come across with New Urban West and actually worked with them a little bit on a couple of projects, not for any money, just as some advisor. They ask us, what do you think? Should we put a banquet facility? What kind of food and beverage? They reach out, and their projects are really, really good, I think, you know. So they reached out. I really endorse this project. Probably the best thing that happened to me is if, you know, hey, deny it, maybe some stakes will go up, they'll close the golf course, and I'll be busier over at Sterling Hills. But I'm a community, anybody that knows us, my wife and I, we're very, very much community-oriented. We're well-known in the city of Ventura because we've been there so long, but we think this project is good. The golf business is lousy. You might say, why did we buy the golf course? We wanted to preserve the food and beverage, and I wanted somewhere to retire at my older age as we operate this thing. I live five minutes away. We may even have a home there eventually on the Sterling Hills. So this project makes some sense for that facility as far as the nine-hole golf courses. The whole thing about golf is the debt. What happened at Ventura, while you were building outlet malls, they put $17 million into two perfectly good golf courses and put that into debt. The cash flow at the properties is fine if they didn't have to pay the bonds off. So if the golf course has no debt, it is still a viable enterprise. So thank you very much. I endorse the project.
Thank you.
Question. Now that you told us, I had a feeling you're the one that bought it from him because it wasn't too long ago that you bought that from him.
Excuse me?
It wasn't too long ago that you bought that.
It was closed two weeks ago.
Uh-huh. I heard about it happening.
Yeah.
Ears are out there.
Yeah, we've kept it under the radar until I make an announcement, and we get our full management team on board and so on.
I think you just did. You're on television.
What I'm wondering is, your business should be doing well at Sterling Hills. A lot of people I know go over there and play.
Excuse me?
Your business should be doing well at Sterling Hills.
Well, you know, he used to do 50,000 rounds there, and it's down to 40,000 rounds, and the demographics in the golf industry and our demographics in the local area, I mean, if you go to somebody's, I'm a social member at Los Postes, and you go to Los Postes, and not many guys, they've run out of, they used to have 300 participating members, golf members. Now they have two. And if, you know, we're a grained community. It's difficult. So, you know, why did I buy a golf course? Of course, that makes no sense, does it? But we think it can stabilize. We want to make it the community golf course, have a lot of fun out there, do some improvements. We make, you know, we won't make too many promises because we got to, you know, I'm a businessman, I don't want to lose money. But it's made money over the years.
It seems like with 40,000.
40,000 rounds.
You're okay.
At that average, at the average rate that you should be getting there.
Yes.
It makes it a viable business.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. And you can pull that down. It should pull down to reach you, the mic. There you go. Perfect.
That works. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First off.
You've got to give us your name first.
Oh, sorry. My name is Aiden Compton. I'm an eighth grader at Los Kalinas. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for letting me speak tonight. This is so awesome. Ever since I moved here, 11 years ago, Camarillo Springs has been a big part of my Camarillo life. We lived on the 10th hole, and I can't imagine a more beautiful view. It's your first impression when you come down the grade going into Camarillo, of our beautiful city. I made so many friends at the kids' camps given by Dave and Jacob, and I bet I can say that more than half of the people in this room, Jacob has helped with their swing in some way or another, and don't get me wrong, I'm still working on my own. Honestly, I'm a busy kid. If we didn't have access to such a close, accessible, affordable, and family-friendly course, I don't think I'd have time to do golf at all. And that would be really unfortunate because my dad and I, that's what we do for bonding. This is what we like to do in our spare time. When he picks me up from school, I'll immediately ask him how golf was, and he'll tell me all the things that clicked with his swing and worked really well. So please, I ask that you vote yes tonight so that other families can continue to use this beautiful course the same way I did with my dad. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Very nice. I think we need to remember that name. He'll probably be sitting here someday. Next, we have Paul Persiri.
Yeah, just one thing. I've heard this so many times tonight, but if you drive south, if you drive north on the freeway with those walls up, you don't see, you don't see any golf course. If you're coming from south, maybe, going, I mean, going south, maybe, but you can't see any golf course, those big old tall walls coming on the other side of the freeway. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay, first of all, my name is Paul Persiri, and I want to thank you, Mayor, and council members, for allowing me this opportunity. Seven years ago, I made the decision when I retired from Reader's Digest after a success Seven years ago, I made the decision when I retired from Reader's Digest after a successful 33-year, what I feel is a successful career. I chose Camarillo Springs, and where we chose to live was here in Camarillo Springs on the golf course, and for two reasons. Number one is both of my daughters live here in Camarillo, and both of my daughters and son-in-laws are air traffic controllers in not only Camarillo, but also in San Barbara. And we're very proud to be able to say that over the seven-year course of living on the golf course at 53 Isabel, on the seventh tee, we have allowed all of our family members and associates with my daughters and son-in-laws from the air traffic controllers to use our golf cart and play on the golf course. Over the time of seven years, we have learned that as much as they love to play golf, this is the younger version of our community, that they have disavowed themselves from the golf course because of deterioration factors. And after seven months of working with, listening to, and being a part of the meetings with Urban West, we have been very, very impressed with all the upcoming developments that could be implemented and the improvements of our community. Inasmuch as I know many of us, and I'm sure some of you members, have been driven down the Canejo grade and looked to the left and looked to the right, and appreciated the views and scenery that we have, especially with our little community in Camarillo Springs. Whether you go north or south, you get an opportunity of appreciating all those beautiful views of where we do live. Another deciding factor was, when I chose our home, was not that we wanted to live in a mobile home. What we had, the opportunity of not only purchasing a beautiful home on the golf course, but then we also realized that we could actually own our own property. Very big deciding factor. With all this said, I think that it's very important that we realize, having an opportunity to work with a company such as Urban West, even though there are a lot of complications and a lot of time that needs to be spent on upgrades and improvements and what we need to, to develop this project, overall, I think cannot see anything but, nothing but improvements. And an opportunity with not only the new homes that are going in near the Camarillo Airport and across the freeway, right from where we live right now, you'll notice that there are a lot of new homes going in. Well, what does that mean? Every time I see 500 new homes, I see 1,000 cars, and we all know what's happening to our freeway. But those homes are all being sold and developed for young people in our community, and young people want to see our golf course improved, just like my own two daughters and son-in-laws have mentioned to me. And our bottom line is, if we get that golf course improved, we'll be able to lure Mike back to our golf course again.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, it's Jereen Adams, and then Jeanette Bradfield? Brantfield. It's a D, I think, Brantfield.
Hello. My name is Jereen Adams. I live at 19 Gitana in Camarillo CCV. Hi, Mike. I support the redevelopment of Camarillo Springs Golf Course. I think that the New Urban West group has presented their plans to us, and they've included us in our wishes for what will happen to the golf course. I urge the City Council to approve the referral and offer further studies for the plan for Camarillo Springs Golf Course. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeanette, and then Jim Woolfry.
I'm Jeanette Bradfield, 79 Margarita. First of all, will the City Council let the golf course die and be fenced? So I have a few questions. First of all, why is it all about the golf? We live where they're going to take out all the golf. So I don't know what their plan is for the ponds. I've been understanding that they're going to dig them out and take the dirt and continue up on Margarita. So we're the only ones that are going to be affected by this housing. When the springs come up, we had a spring come up in front of our house. Where's the New Urban West going to be when they come up under these people's homes like it did in Agura? It is a lot of water, or if they flood, or if they collapse, or if there's an earthquake, New Urban West is going to be gone. The nature trails, I don't think you can have nature trails in a golf course. So the only nature trails, which they call nature trails, have to be in that 250 feet from their property line to wherever. And who's going to keep the ponds full? They're empty now, the golf course is dead, so are they going to keep the golf course and repair the golf course for the next X amount of years in front of our homes on Margarita? Because the water is almost down now. And when they build those homes there, along that waterway, all the fowl is going, water fowl is going to be gone. All our ducks, geese, everything will be gone because they have no place to go. So I have those questions about what's going to happen to the ponds and what's going to happen as far as nature trails. I don't know if they think they're going to build nature trails all over. So there's just a lot of questions to be asked yet about the water, the ponds, the traffic, all that goes with building it. So hopefully, you guys all know about all those things already. Thank you.
Thank you. So Jim next, then Jeff Root after that.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and Councilmen. Thank you for allowing all us to view our views, which you've heard a lot of pros and cons. Basically, what I want to do is ask you to support the referral. I trust Urban West. We've been to several meetings since January. I also trust the City Council and the planning people that will be, will be working with Urban West. There are a lot of questions, as the lady just said, but I think those questions will be answered or addressed, and you guys will come back and tell us whether you're going to go one step further. But I think the referral is very positive to go forward, and I do trust the Council to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't state his name.
I thought he did.
No.
Jeff.
Come on back and state your names. If you did, if she didn't say it, she didn't get it. You don't have to give the address.
My name is Jim Woolfry, and I also live at 59 Margarita on the 15th Fairway.
Great, thank you.
Which does get flooded occasionally.
Oh.
Yes.
And then-
I know. You guessed what it-
Good evening, City Council members and Mayor. My name's Jeff Root. I'm a real estate attorney here in Camarillo. I also own one of the largest residential properties here in Camarillo. And I was not going to speak on this particular project because I didn't have all the facts in front of me, until I heard one of the most strident land use advocates for the people of Camarillo came up here earlier and gave her approval of going ahead with this project in which I know Councilmember Craven asked her a question with Ms. Burge when she came up here, and she said that we should go ahead with this project. I haven't seen anybody in the city of Camarillo that has done as much homework on land use issues as she has done with, like, the Canejo Creek development and so forth. So I want to say two things. One, if she feels we should go ahead with this development, I'm firmly behind her and confident that we should go ahead and take this at least to the next level and do the analysis on it. I know that Merrill would not get up here in front of this group of people and tell you to take it to the next level unless she felt confident to do it. The second thing is, for anybody here that's in the city of Camarillo that feels that taking it to the next level raises some concerns for them, I have had multiple dealings with the planning department here in the city of Camarillo, and I will go on record as telling you that they are some of the most competent, intelligent, and professional people that you're going to meet in any line of work, and especially in land use issues. And they are not going to let any project go by unless every T is crossed and every I is dotted. So if there's anybody here that has reservations about doing a thorough analysis on this particular project, they should be, they should be very comfortable to know that the staff at our land use development department is not going to let this project go through unless they feel that it's a positive development for the city of Camarillo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our staff thanks you for the compliment. Our last speaker, Frank Catalari?
Do I get more time?
Actually, it might be less.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
You do have to give your name before-
My name is Frank Catalano, and I'm a resident of Camarillo. I've played Camarillo Springs over probably 20 years or 25 years. I saw it as a wonderful golf course and see it today as one that needs a lot of TLC. I think that, I didn't expect, I didn't know we were having a meeting tonight, and so I came at the last minute. And I want to say I'm a little bit saddened. And I'm saddened because a developer has decided that they would purchase a property in our town and hold hostage those people that live next to it, threaten them with their jobs and their property value unless you are willing to give that developer what he wants. And so we're in this pickle. You've got to make a decision. Do some of these people have less property value? The threat of property value declining? Some people losing their jobs October 1st? Or do you challenge that developer? Do you make a stand and say today, "You're not going to do that"? It's a really difficult question. I don't want to be in your shoes. I'm glad I'm here and not on the other side there, because you've got a decision that's probably not going to bode well either way. But you do know you have a developer who's threatened people. That's a sad situation. You have an ability, an opportunity to make a difference. I will say, I'm president of the Ventura County Junior Golf Association. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but I will speak on behalf of myself. And what I see with kids is a tremendous number of young kids coming through Camarillo Springs as an 18-hole golf course, and a golf course that it could be restored to what it was 15, 20 years ago under right management. Certainly, if the option is zero, we choose 12 holes, but that's not the fair option. You've got a tough decision. I hope you have the moral fortitude to do what's right.
Thank you. That was a nice summary there. That was the last speaker sheet, and I'll just give one more call. Would anybody else like to address or address us on this issue before we move forward? Okay.
Is the hand in the back?
Oh, there was a hand. Can you come forward, and then we need you to fill out a speaker sheet, but you can go ahead and talk first. And be sure to give that name for the record.
My name is Aaron Wolf, W-O-L-F-F, and I've lived in Camarillo for six years now. Pretty much, I just want to ask the Council, this is just a referral, they're just to do more tests, right?
Mm-hmm.
So overall, I just don't see why, just vote, you might as well just vote yes, and just test it all out. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but if it does, then the golf course is going to get renovated, we're going to get a bunch of new homes, and it just seems like a good idea. And short and sweet, that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you very much. And would you mind filling out one of these sheets and giving it to the clerk? Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Well, we thank you all for coming, and you did a great job of following all the rules, and we appreciate you being here tonight. So anything else with the applicant? Anything else you'd like, anyone would like to say? Ron.
First of all, we were going to make this dramatic statement of having everybody stand up. What I forgot was that we're senior citizens, and a lot of them drove here. And they're gone home. Okay? So we'll have them stand up in front of the camera, and you can visualize them. Just a couple of points that I wanted, wanted to make regarding, a little bit of rebuttal and a little bit of explanation. First of all, there were a couple of comments made that in their homeowners association in their area, they hadn't received any communications from us. And I totally understand the situation, and I'd explained it before, that there were some homeowners associations that did not, would not forward the emails that we had, we had sent to them. We sent it to the management association, we sent it, went before the board, and we said, "Can we knock on the door?" And we knocked on over 400 doors. We wanted to knock on every door, but you have to get permission in order to solicit within those areas, and we're not going to go against the wishes of boards. And they did not give us permission. That's why we sent out the mass mailing at the end, is we said, "We've got people that may not have gotten this information, so let's send out a mass mailing to all residents to get it." And so for those that didn't get notified, I do apologize for that. We did the best, the best that we could on that. Also, there was just kind of this interchangeable, you know, landowner, developer, landowner, developer, okay? If we were in court, I think, you know, we'd say, "Yes, let's stipulate that Ron Richards is an SOB," okay? And move forward. That is the reason that we went with New Urban West. We sought them out after, after last January. We did vetting on them. Richard Francis, who was very key in the SOAR initiative, had personal and professional contacts within New Urban West. He knew the partners. We vetted them through him. We vetted them. It turns out that one of the founding partners of New Urban West was the husband of a friend of ours that I worked with in San Luis Obispo. And so we contacted him, so we vetted New Urban West and said, "We need somebody we can work with." And I think what's gone as a theme throughout the whole thing is, over the past seven months, New Urban West has shown that they're willing to work with us, that they can respond to what we want, and they've gained our trust. They've gained, that's one common theme that was, was throughout the testimonies, is they've gained our trust. We can work with them. And all we're asking now is, let's move forward. The general plan referral, general plan amendment referral. I get it right every third time. Okay? That we're asking for is, let us move to the next step. We think there is enough content there, enough promise there for us to move to the next step and do analysis. And as other people said, we trust the process. We trust city staff. We trust the thoroughness of that. We trust New Urban West, and I trust the residents. As the president of a homeowners association, I trust the residents, and if they don't like it, they're going to tell you. You know, my wife says, "Don't answer the phone." You know? And I'm sure you have exactly that same situation.
No.
We're, it's the old trust but verify. We trust them. They've proven themselves that they'll work with us, but we're going to hold their feet to the fire on what it is that we want. We know that the city will hold their feet to the fire on what it is. So we're ready to move on to the next step, and we just ask the City Council to support us in that. We think we have something that will make Camarillo Springs even more special, and that's something that's close to all of our hearts. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. It shows what a great community we have in Camarillo, and we come together as a community to work through issues. Anything from staff? Any sum up? Any-
No.
No, that was easy. Good summary. Any questions from Council before we start to talk about this? Anything left to ask? Okay. Then I'd say, who'd like to start? Or do you need to take a break first before we do that? Are you all okay? I don't see anybody shaking their head, so, okay. Who'd like to start? Mr. Kildee?
I'll start.
If you'd like.
Yeah, I'll start on this. I want to thank everybody-
I want to thank everybody for being here. This is democracy, I feel, at its best here. And sometimes it's messy, but that's the way, the democratic system that we have. And I think a lot of, and I won't go into this too much, a lot of entities that we all know can learn a lot about this process that we have here tonight. Personally, I'm not comfortable with the individual that bought this property. However, I can't control who buys property, but we as council members and you as citizens, we all have to deal with this. We're in it together here. I still have many questions about this. I'm not sure that many of them can be answered at this particular point. I do think that it's important for us to move this forward for nothing else. I think this actually enhances the public's participation in this. There will be, we had a request and a determination from New West that they will continue the dialogue here. That needs to happen. There'll be many public forums with this. It will go before the planning commission here to have further dialogue on this. Eventually, most likely, it'll reach the city council. So the public will have many, many more times to have a say on this, and I think that is good. Many of you out there live there. This is in your backyard. You have a vested interest in what happens here, and I support that. Specifically, the reason why I asked for an economic study is because that will be, that will determine a lot of the economics of this process and this project, whether economically it's viable or not. I think that's important. There'll be a sequo with this. Will determine all the environmental issues. And this is, this is significant, but we need to do that to see. We were able to take a closer look at this. It's been, as I said, a little messy. It's been somewhat unusual, but perhaps, I think, we got the public engaged, and I think that is a really good thing. So with all of those and many more, I can support that we move this forward for continued dialogue. This is not an approval. This is a referral, a referral to continue this dialogue, and my hope is that all of you residents will stay engaged in this here. And we're here to listen to you. We're here to act accordingly to the best of our abilities and do what is right for the citizens of Camarillo.
Thank you, Kevin. Who wants to? No. You want to go next? Who wants to go next down there?
I'm writing something real quick.
You ready, Mr. Chimpson?
Sure.
You can tell we're thinking hard about this. This isn't an easy one.
No, this is a tough, this is a tough situation. I want to make some initial observations, and then I have a question, a couple of questions to raise to staff because I'm trying to, and I'm going to float it, I'm going to float the balloon, but I want to think about, I want to lay it out and then have some reaction. I think that Mr. Vaca, Mr. Spielman, if he's still out there, and Mr. Kildee were absolutely correct in their comments. This is not a hearing on amending the general plan relative to the property. It just is not. The level of detail in order to do that isn't here tonight, so there's no way that we, as a council, can decide that. And it's a decision on a referral for study. That's what it is. It's a referral for study. And if the matter's referred, at some point, it's going to come back to the council, and we're going to have to decide, and the council has complete discretion in terms of its decision-making, whether to approve the specific project and the general plan amendment. I may make a couple more thoughts to Mr. Vaca, and then I'm going to ask you a question. To me, it's a given that the golf course is unique to Camarillo Springs, and it's also an asset to a larger area, and I'm speaking about the city of Camarillo. It's an important recreational asset. It's an asset for the entire community. And aside from its obvious recreational importance, the property presents several other significant aspects and several other very difficult or challenging environmental issues, not the least of which are the flooding and hydrology issues and the traffic issues, as well as wildlife and aesthetic and open space consideration. No question about it. By the way, and remember, this is a totally different conversation. This is not like Caneo Creek. This is not a green fields project. This is, at its core, inherently a redevelopment project with a very significant recreational and open space component. So that's, that's how I view it. So the community is split. There are a lot of people here tonight in support of it. There are many people that are opposed to it, and there are people whose views I respect who are on both sides, which is fine. You know, some, in good faith, want the opportunity to further collaborate with New Urban West and the property owner while the course continues to be operated, and to see if some consensus can be reached on revamping the golf course and having the construction of additional senior housing units. And others who are in good faith say, "Uh-uh. No. We don't want that. We like the things the way they are. The community engagement process has not been robust enough in their, in their opinion to date, and the developer and the property owner should not hold closure over the heads of people in terms of threats." And I will tell you, based on my personal background and profession, my natural instinct is to reject threats. I personally don't like the factual circumstances that led to where we are tonight, but so what? I'm being asked to balance the issues because I sit up on this dais and make a decision, and that's what we get elected to do. So here we are. My criteria is taking the long view, what is in the best interest of the city of Camarillo, and that includes the Camarillo Springs community. I want to float an idea and a question to Mr. Vaca. And I also note, and I certainly respect Mr. Kildee's view relative to an economic impact analysis. And I note that we, as a council, and this was already developed before I arrived on the scene with this council, we have a city council policy for non-city-initiated general plan amendments. And let me quote from it. It's policy number 7.01 and A4. And it says that the city council will determine at the time of referral of a general plan amendment or a specific plan, whether a fiscal impact analysis will be required in conjunction with the proposal. So we have that ability as a council to do that. This language, to me, as a lawyer, is quite generic, but I think it can fit in a number of different situations. What I would like to know from staff is, let's, I just want to float this conceptually. What if we were to go down the road of saying that we would approve the referral on a limited basis? To me, the most important environmental issue here is the hydrology and floodplain issue. Put the golf course aside for the moment. The most important issue to me, and I'm not minimizing traffic issues and aesthetic issues and wildlife issues, et cetera. To me, the floodplain, based on the pictures we all saw in January, hits me on the side of the head. What if we were to say, "All right, we'll refer this for the limited purpose of doing a comprehensive, requiring the applicant at the applicant's cost. We would have a consultant selected by the city at the applicant's cost, do a comprehensive floodplain and hydrological analysis together with a fiscal impact analysis, which I can outline in a minute, and then return to the council after that first increment is done, and have the council then decide whether to continue with the referral process and order additional studies, or alternatively, terminate the referral process." Mr. Vaca, do we have that ability from a practical standpoint to focus on one environmental issue like that?
It would have to be a majority direction of the council for that, and I think the council by majority does have that discretion for general plan amendment referrals.
Well, I think the council's got that discretion. What I'm concerned about is whether or not you, if you, can you take one individual, can you take an individual environmental issue, assuming that there was support for this, and I don't know that there is. This may be the, you know, the lead balloon. But does it make sense to look at that issue in and of itself first?
We may not be able to do that without the effort and assistance of the applicant because it's going to depend on their land plan. So I don't think we could do that 100% independent of the applicant, just on hydrology, without really understanding their land plan. I'd actually ask Public Works to weigh in on that.
Yeah, on that item, as far as, short version is, we need to know what's going to be going on the land to know what's going to happen with the hydrology and hydraulics.
You've got to know that first.
So it goes hand in hand with the proposed development of the land and what effect that's going to have on the hydraulic engine hydraulics and the flood zone issues.
So you really can't, what I'm hearing staff say is, you really can't take that specific issue in isolation and just look at that issue. You have to look at the additional environmental issues which would go along with, with that floodplain analysis, that hydrology analysis. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so we would have to analyze the proposed land development plan and where the residential development inhabitable or areas where, for example, the clubhouse is proposed and for human habitation, and then figure out the floodway issues in relation to that land plan. And so what I'm going back to is, we wouldn't be able to do that 100% independent of the applicant. We would need their participation in that.
Okay. So I'm hearing that that approach may not be the most, that approach may not be pragmatic, I guess is what I'm, what I'm hearing. Well, what, okay, since that's the case, my intention at this point would be to support a referral, but I am going to, and when the time comes to make a motion on it, I am going to ask for a very specific fiscal analysis, fiscal impact analysis, that's consistent with the council's policy, that's going to cover a number of things. And so it's probably not the right time to verbalize it, but I think we need to do that. And it's consistent with what Mr. Kildee has said. And I can outline that when the time comes to make a motion.
And then let me ask Mr. Vaca, would that, all of the detail have to be in the motion or just the request that a detailed financial study be done, and then we could talk later about everything that goes?
Well, I think if Councilmember Trembley would like to offer his input, I think the council should listen to that and then make a decision after that point.
Sure. May I, Madam Mayor?
I guess where I'm going is, we can sit and debate the financial report for an hour or two as we all work on it, but there are standards and there are, and if you even had to come back to us to talk about what the pieces of that financial plan might be. I don't remember us ever putting in a motion that we'll have a financial study and all the details of it.
I haven't either.
In the three years I've been here, I haven't seen fiscal analysis associated with residential development. And typically, this type of impact analysis is when you're having, for instance, maybe a big box use in some part of town that may have an impact on the downtown mom and pop businesses. That's usually, in my planning experience, what this type of fiscal impact analysis is associated with. But I think there is some concerns on the viability of golf and what the studies may demonstrate after they've gone through that exercise.
But notwithstanding that, I mean, this is a relevant project at its core, and there's not, in my view, it's not, that there are some, there are some commonalities with the type of project that you just, that Mr. Vaca just outlined, and that's why, and it's in our policy. So the specific things that I would want to look at, so I better, I better put it out on the table. The specific things that I want to look at for a fiscal impact analysis would be three things in particular. One is consideration of various sizings of the golf course in terms of the various holes. That's the 18, 12, I think, is where we were, and nine, or whatever that, whatever those configurations are. Both the capital and the operation and maintenance costs of the improvements that are necessitated by the proposed project, and then the property values within Camarillo Springs. And my view is, that should be conducted by a consultant who is independent, who is selected by the city, and whose work is paid for by the applicant. So that's what I am thinking of in terms of a fiscal impact analysis, which is entirely consistent with adoption or referral of a proposal.
Pardon me, Councilmember Trembley. I got point one and point three, but can you repeat point two, please?
Oh, shame on me. Oh, it would be the capital and operation and maintenance costs of the improvements, and I'm going to leave that broad, which are necessitated by this project. And that's going to involve not just flood improvements, but infrastructure improvements and other improvements that are going to be necessary, and traffic improvements. So I'm looking at this in a broad sense, and this is part of our policy. And then I could use some more clarification on your point number three, what you're looking for there. Point number three, the property values? Yeah. Yeah, how is this project going to impact property values? Whose property values? Camarillo Springs. Okay.
Which would be the type of housing potentially that could be out there, whether it would enhance that or detract from it.
That's correct. Thank you. Yeah, no, that helps. Thank you.
I have to make it clear, I wasn't questioning whether you have a financial study. The piece that I was, I can list, I could list you 40 things here if we want to sit and talk about what needs to go into a financial. What I'm saying, we don't need the detail of that in the motion, but the detail, the point being, we will have a financial study, and then we can come back and detail out what's going to go in there.
Right. I was just trying to, to, I was just trying, oh, no, 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 I know that, Madam Mayor, and thank you, I appreciate that. I was just trying to lay out what, in my view, ought to be covered in a fiscal impact analysis, and, you know, first and foremost, it's the various, from a golf course standpoint, the various sizings that are potentially involved in this course.
Anything else at this point in time?
No, not right now.
No. Mr. Morgan, you ready?
I think so. Got a lot to look at here because we got off on a bad start. Guy comes in and threatens us right away and says, "If you don't get it, they're going to close everything." That wasn't a good way of approaching this city council. Never has been, and we're going to stand up and fight it if it happened. We, at the last meeting, or the meeting before, we indicated that if the citizens came back and asked for us to reconsider it, we may look at it. And that's what's happened here this evening. It's going to be a real difficult one because you are divided in many ways. I'm not going to get into any details of the financial stuff, all that stuff. I'll give you some things I'm worried about. Number one, I heard a lady talk about soils and potential Barbara thing, talk about soils and things. I'd like to make sure when we're doing that, there's a soils check, but I don't remember in 54 years any farming going on there, Kittle, and I've been a long time, and I haven't seen it.
... birthday party on kindergarten. It was a farm.
Okay. Okay, then I think they should check the soil just to make sure. The golf course itself, if this is a nine or eight, you're going to have a tough time getting me to sport it coming around next time because I can show you, or I can show you 18, and I'm not that good. I want to give it to you to show your person. Flood mitigation is a very important concern to me because I've seen it, and I've seen it go over half that golf course. And to, one of the things Mr. Trembley was talking about was the hydrology, and we're talking about who to affect. We don't know who it's going to affect until we see how those houses are going to be set up. And so you can't do anything until you've got a plan. Because if you have 250 feet and this houses are up here in the mobile home park, which I have to worry about all the mobile homeowners, especially those that are being affected down at the bottom, I don't care if it's 10 people, it's still people getting very much affected by flood. That's one of the things that I have to come back and show me, I'm a show me guy, show me that you can mitigate that flood so it doesn't flood anyway or cause other people to have flooding into their mobile homes. They've been there a long time before that gentleman got here. Wildlife corridor, the answer to my question, making sure there's going to be a wildlife corridor left. I see it in a plane, it can't happen, but I want to see it. I've saw those pictures of deer out there and geese, and I've seen them too, and I think they'd still be there, and we've got to keep that corridor. Next, the maintenance. Maintenance of the open space, the dog park, and the trails. Someone's got to show us who's going to pay for that, who's going to maintain it. Pardon me?
You said the New Homeowners Association.
He said the new homeowners association for the new homes.
Well, we'll see. It's one of, see who's going to pay for all this, because you've got to show them before they start paying for it. Anyway, those are my main concerns in this going forward, to see what impacts it would have on my, my residents, the residents out the mobile home park. I can let it go forward to see what it, what they can come up with. I'd like to see what they can do that would improve. And the transportation out of that, out of the area is going to be off, off of Ridge, Ridge, Ridge View, because you can't go through the park. I don't want to see anyone going through infecting the others. That's, that's my main concerns, that I want to make sure the people out there aren't affected in a, in a, in a bad way, in a deleterious way. So that's my whole goal here. I can't wait to see what they show. It's going to be difficult to prove that, but that's where I'm coming from. So I'm going to support the referral, but remember this, we've had referrals before that we've turned down, okay? So don't come back and complain. Look at all the money we spent. That's happened too. Well, we're giving you a shot. If you want to spend the money, that's fine. The owner of the Resurban West back there, if they want to spend that money, just remember you spent it. And it's not that we owe anything. We'll look at the plan, and then we'll see if we can make improvements or that you, maybe you won't like those improvements. But that's what we have to look at, and that's who we represent, the people of our community. That's it. I'm supporting the referral based on those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Go ahead.
Okay. I think I'm developing a habit last week and now this week, or last meeting. I, I think I'm odd man out on this one. But I, this is one of those things that is really hard. I have two concerns, and as somebody said, we have to look out for what we think each of us as an individual thinks is the best thing for the people of Camarillo. And I'm thinking of two groups here. One is the people in the mobile home park of Camarillo Springs, and the other is the people in the new homes. And for the new home people, I have two concerns, which is also a concern for all of you. I'm just looking at numbers. Somebody told me there was 900 homes, and somebody else said 967, 956, something like that. Whatever you look at it, 300 homes is going to increase the number of homes out there in a small area by one-third. And that's really going to be an impact. My biggest prob, my bigger problem is where those homes are going to go. And that's as quite a few of you have said, is in whatever the term is, a floodplain, a detention basin, whatever it is, it's where the water goes, where the water comes to drain out, and where the overflow from the creek goes. And I, like many of you, have seen it overflow several times. Different people have estimated different heights, from three to eight to nine feet. I believe the only way they're going to get, if this is approved, and it looks like it is, to, for further study, they will have to raise the level of that ground. And when they raise the level of that ground, it means that we're going to have 30 to 90 acre feet of water going over to those mobile homes. Because I don't know how else they're going to get the water out of there when it's coming out of the creek. So I just think it's a problem I don't want to address, and I cannot support it.
Well, this is a tough one. First of all, I, I agree with whoever said it. When, when someone comes in, and you can't stop them from buying a piece of property or buying a business, but I find it very disconcerting, very, I've got to find a nice way of saying it. When someone comes in and threatens us, who, who obviously did not buy it with the intention of operating a golf course, and then, in a sense, holds us hostage, it, the gentleman said, "Hold hostage the people of the springs and homes and jobs unless we make a decision in his favor." And that's exactly what this person did. They came in, maybe the golf course wasn't in the best condition, and it's unfortunate someone didn't buy it, who wanted to make it a, a good golf course again. So now, here we are, and what do you, I don't believe that if we do, if they do this study, they're going to be able to overcome some of the problems. And I think the biggest one is the issue of the flooding. I personally have seen white caps on that out there as you come down the grade, and there were literally white caps on that. And you look at areas, and let's just go to Houston, and look at the one, the homes that were in the worst shape, or those that were built somewhere, they probably shouldn't have been built because they were right there when, as soon as the flood was going to happen, they were the first to go and to flood the worst. And with that old saying that you can't fool Mother Nature, that the rivers always go back where they originally were, and those are the ones that flood. So if, if indeed this, and it sounds like it is going to be referred, but the study's better, I mean, they're going to have to spend an awful lot of time trying to figure this one out because the flooding out there is tough. The other one, the issue that has to be addressed is traffic. We have the on-ramp going north from Camarillo Springs is not meant to hold as many people probably that could use it now, and to add another, you know, 300 people, 600 people. It's, it's going to have to be approved, so whether they could afford to do that as well. A couple of other things that I've heard that I would really like you to look at and, and make sure that, that are in there, and I'm assuming most of these would be. But I, I really have a concern, who's going to maintain the open space? And that has to go in the financial study, and it also has to go into how, how in the future we're going to be able to be assured that all of this is going to be accomplished. I can't imagine how 300 homes and their HOA is going to be able to afford to maintain their area and come in and have to maintain all that open space. Financial, and the dog park. I don't, financially, I don't know how you could put that burden on 300 homes. So that really has to be a piece of that financial study. You know, I just, I don't know how you could do it. Let's see what else we have on my list here. I want to, I want to be sure we talk about the traffic. We got that. I really would like to see us talk about the single story versus the picture shows mostly two-story homes. So I want to make sure that's part of the analysis, because I think if indeed this is going to be a senior project, that is in the best interest of the city of Camarillo, because it's something that is asked for over and over and over again. Go ahead, while I look at my list.
While you're looking at your list, somebody brought up that there were more parcels, this is a staff question, I guess, more parcels listed on page, big page 13, than actually is contained within those 30 acres. Is, is that accurate?
Yes, I believe that those APNs cover the entire 182 acres.
Then I'm thinking, we don't want to be referring something that covers 132 acres if we're only going to be referring 30.
Well, the request is only to change the land use designation on 30 and to preserve the remaining 152 acres as quasi-public.
Right.
So that is.
Well, if they're already that, why, why are they asking for a change?
This is just the property in question. So the entire project site is 182 acres, of which only 30 acres is proposed to be changed from quasi-public to low-medium density residential.
So, but you have to study the whole in order to see how.
Yes, because they still plan to reorient and analyze golf and flooding and everything else on the remaining 152 acres.
Okay. It's very clear that it's only the 30 that's being.
That's right.
Yes, absolutely. Well, we're going to analyze 182 acres, but only 30 acres are proposed for residential development.
Right.
And only 30 are proposed for zoning, zone change?
General plan change.
Correct. General plan and zone, yeah.
Even if, even if you wanted to go to something else, retail, commercial, industrial?
Well, the clubhouse and golf course technically is commercial, but yes, to answer your question, it's allowed under the quasi-public general plan.
Quasi-public, okay. But it's because it's a golf course.
Right.
A public golf course, yes.
Okay. I think we've heard, oh, the ponds, I think that's something that needs, and that goes along with the wildlife and the wildlife quarter. That's something that you don't see in a lot of our, our studies that come through, but it's really got to be more so than we normally see because of the area that it is. And if it's going to cut off that wildlife quarter, where are they going to go, and how are you going to handle that?
One more. Your Honor, can I add to that? I'm concerned that what happened in the past years could happen again in the future, and that's why I need, like that looked at. Everything grew up in those ponds, no one cleaned it. And it, it did cause some of the water to rise more because it didn't give it that, that pond effect. And so how can we get that, be assured that that's going to happen, this new owner, making sure that that area is cleaned periodically so it doesn't cause any flood, help add to flooding? I'd like to see what the owner's going to say about that. Not now, but when you're doing the studies.
Well, I think that the other one, and it kind of ties to what you're just saying, and I don't know how you address this one, but it's, one of the things that bothers me the most is the long-term guarantee that this will exist, that five years from now we won't be back here begin, again, because they say the golf course isn't working, or how, how can we be assured that the maintenance will be there, be assured that the open space will be maintained? And so you're going to have to work at some kind of a guarantee, some, working through some kind of whatever to come up with those guarantees that indeed we can be assured that the plan will be the plan, not just today, but 10 years from now. And the other question I have about that is, we're, we were hearing that the current landowner is going to sell the project to Urban West. Is that when the general plan referral happens, or when the change occurs?
That is a question for New Urban West.
And why I ask that question is, is I'd like to know what the commitment is, and how do we hold them to it, that they will maintain the golf course in good repair until we work through this process? This is a really long process. It's not something quick, with some of the hurdles they've got to go through. I mean, it's going to take years probably to get through this. And it's a very expensive process. So they've got to understand, and it's all on the, on the developer, not on the city, as far as the financial piece. They've got to decide, you know, are they willing to take that risk? And there's no guarantee if this goes forward, that it, the referral goes forward, that the project will go forward. So it's something they have to think about. You talk about a financial analysis, is it worth that risk? But I'm really concerned that, one, that we deal with an owner that we can work with, and two, that there truly is a commitment to keep things in good repair until something occurs.
I, your Honor, one more thing. This hit me earlier, and I forgot about it. But before they start building the houses, and the homes, I think they have their new, have their new land, their new layout for the golf course finished, so that it doesn't interrupt playing golf again for another two years. But I think they need to have the landscape, or whatever the layout's going to be for the golf course to be finished, so people can continue playing golf. So that's where I'm.
And I think that goes to even, take it a little bit further, that when you come back, that you really got a good timetable and a methodology to assure that the, the different steps occur, and that we don't do one step, and then that's it. For instance, they should, I don't think they should be allowed to build the new homes until a lot of this other improvements have been made, so that we don't end up with a situation that the homes are built and then nothing else occurs.
Right.
So those are my thoughts. Anyone else have anything to add to it? I guess, I guess when it gets down to the end, I, I probably tend to agree with Mrs. Craven more than, than the, rather, three of you on this one, because I, I just don't, personally don't think it's going to happen because of some of the, the natural issues out there, the flooding and the traffic and so forth. But if the community wants to go through it, and we want to give it a shot, you know, and the developer wants to pay the price, but there is absolutely no guarantee that it's, that it gets approved in the end.
I don't think that, I don't want to say that you guarantee, maybe with us, we're not pro-development. We're saying, all we're saying is, let's see you prove some of these things. And if you, you vote along with the same thing, all we're doing is asking for proof, proof that they can do this in the way that everyone on this board thinks acceptable to the folks out there. I think that's the way you say it instead of saying, more on that side, there's no sides on this one. The sides are not there. It's whether or not you want to refer it just to be looked at. And they've been told it could be turned down.
Well, I think, I guess what I was saying is, I think Mrs. Craven has probably come to the conclusion that she doesn't think it's the best. And I think that the, personally, I think that what we study is going to probably tell us that. But, you know, he's got us in such a, he's got us over a barrel, and it's like, what do you do? It's, because my fear is, is if we do nothing and we don't refer it, then what's going to happen?
Yep.
You know, code enforcement can keep it from looking too bad, but we can't force them into operating a, a golf course. And it's, so it makes it very, very difficult.
I'm doing a motion. Okay.
Anyone else? Anything to add?
I'll, I'll move that we do refer this for further study with all of the necessary verbiage that has been discussed tonight with the economic plan, operation and maintenance capital, property values, traffic improvement, type of housing, open space, and various other sundry things that have been brought up by the council here, if anybody wants to add to it and willing to listen. Yeah.
Can I?
Yeah, can I add to that, or, or try it, or try, just try it a little differently?
You shouldn't, you can.
No, no, no disrespect.
Excuse me, there's a, there's a procedural issue here. First of all, the, the motion that was made by Councilmember Kildee is, is a little bit broad, when he referred to all, all of the discussion, because you've been talking about it for, you know, half an hour, 40 minutes here. So, and, and from what I heard from Councilmember Trembley, I didn't know if you were planning on supplementing what Councilmember Kildee said.
Actually, I was going to substitute.
Pardon me?
I was going to substitute the motion.
Okay.
Come up with a different motion.
Well, let's do this, and then procedurally, we have a motion on the floor. I did not hear a second.
Let's see what the substitute motion's going to be first.
So for lack of a second, then that motion would not move forward.
I may not be any better at the, let me, let me try this one. Move to refer this item for a general plan amendment review. Concurrently with the environmental analysis analyses to be performed as part of the referral, that a fiscal impact analysis be conducted of the issue, of, on those issues specified by the city, including but not limited to: number one, the consideration of various sizings of the golf course; number two, the capital and operational maintenance costs associated with the installation of improvements necessitated by the proposed project; number three, the parties who will be specified to be responsible for these costs, and the management of the improvements that would be constructed as part of the project, including the golf course, for the long term, and I'm going to leave it that generic, for the long term. And number four, the impact on property values within Camarillo Springs from the project. The study would be performed by a consultant selected by the city and paid for by the applicant.
Your Honor.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
Yeah, I, I have probably just one thing. And, and that was the, oh, what was it? God, there's so many things.
It was a long motion, I'm sorry.
Sure it was. I'm trying to think which one it was.
Show it to him in writing, so I can think of it.
I don't think you'd understand my handwriting, my hieroglyphics.
You can't write? Okay. Anyway, it was one of the subjects there about the, oh, God, it wasn't the part about what the property value would be, one right before that.
The golf course side?
Oh, the golf course. Whether, we, we shouldn't be the ones studying whether or not a nine, eight, or eight, or nine, 12, or 18 is, should be there. That should not be us looking to see. That's up to the person doing the decision that's putting the proposal forward.
I, well, respectfully, I disagree with you. I think there should.
Okay, I disagree.
No, that's fine. But let me tell you why I disagree. And that is, I think it's incumbent upon the city to have its own independent, a consultant which is independently selected by the city to perform that analysis, rather than, with due respect to the developer, have the developer bring forward a consultant that the developer selects to do that analysis. The city of Ventura did that with, I think it was pro forma.
The city of Ventura did that with, I think it was Pro forma LLC, or whoever, whoever it was, and it's done independently.
That was their own golf course.
That's fine.
That wasn't the private.
But I, but I want, my intent would be to have the city select that consultant, and that consultant to, it's just, no disrespect to the developer, but just that would carry much higher credibility for me, if it were a consultant selected by the city but paid for by the applicant.
I agree.
Okay, you got a second?
I seconded.
Okay, we're all set.
This is a tough one.
It is.
All righty.
Ready to vote?
No other discussion?
Yes.
We have a discussion?
Yes, there's no other, yes.
That was a double negative? All right, please vote. And that does pass with four yes, with Mrs. Craven voting no. Again, thank you all for coming, for being engaged in your community, and it's not yet, so keep engaged.
I'm going to show this.
Adjourn?
Are we adjourned? We're adjourned.
And unless there's any other business before us, we are also adjourned.